And I call to order this August twenty third, two thousand and twenty one, meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which is referenced at the top of our posted agenda for this evening, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will feature public comment. This meeting is being conducted remotely using the Zoom conferencing application. Our posted meeting agenda notes the various means by which the meeting can be viewed. Connect via Zoom webinar link, connect to Zoom via phone number. You can view the live stream on the YouTube link by going to the town website, clicking the remote meetings button. And you can also watch local cable access Verizon Channel thirty, Charter one ninety-two. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to share your computer screen unless it's part of the presentation. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each agenda item and its speaker. After the speaker concludes the presentation, I will invite board members to offer their comments, questions, or motions. If the agenda is a public hearing, I will invite public comments specific to that matter at that time. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you. If members wish to respond to other members, please request to do so through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. If you're not speaking, you may want to consider muting your microphone. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. Now like to confirm access by all the members who will be participating in this meeting. First, board members, when I call your name, please unmute and respond in the affirmative. I'm Jason Perro, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Vice Chair Leslie Rattan. Clerk Scott Rogers. Member Julianne Hirsch. Member Karen Wickstead, Kristen Wickstead, sorry, Kristen. And now I'd like to check on the staff members who are being, will be present throughout the meeting. Assistant Town Administrator John Cudair, I'm sorry, Town Administrator John Cudair.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins. Public Works Director Scott Sharpentier. Police Chief William Liver. And Fire Chief and our Zoom host for the evening, David Parenti. Thank you. We also have the services of Northborough Cable Access Television. I will review the procedure for public comment when we come to that point on the agenda. With that, I think we're ready to begin. And the first item is the approval of the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Yes, Leslie.
I move that we approve the July nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Moved by Leslie Rattan, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any discussion? Julianne Hirsch.
Yes, I am requesting a correction under my report. The first paragraph, when I requested a presentation about funding that will hopefully be coming to the town. I also asked for information about the COVID relief funds and the Rescue Plan Act and any various programs that we're entitled to. That was not included in my report, so if you wouldn't mind adding that, please.
Sure. I think we can make that modification. Any other discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan. And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Minutes approved as amended. Next up, it's past the hour of seven P M. And we have Alexis Vaeos for Brilla Coffee LLC to consider an application for common victualer and entertainment license as submitted by Brilla Coffee LLC for premises located at seventeen West Main Street. Chief, if you could do the honors.
On the way. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. Happy Monday evening.
Happy Monday to you too. Alexis, did I get your last name pronunciation correct?
Yes, you did it perfectly. Thank you.
Wonderful, okay. It's only gonna go down here, hill from here, for the rest of the evening, I think. Let's see, if we have the application in front of us, this is, can you just talk a little bit about the business and the changes that you're presenting here tonight?
Yes, absolutely. So my wife, Ocedis, beside me and myself, Alexis, we're the sole owners of Bria Coffee LLC. We are a specialty coffee roaster located in Rutland, Massachusetts. We're originally from Nicaragua, Central America. We have a lot of friends and as well as family members that have farms in Nicaragua. So we started our own specialty coffee roasting company here. We also have a coffee shop already located in Main Street Holden. Right now, we opened about four months ago, so we're getting a lot of great feedback and a lot of customer visits. We currently distribute our specialty coffee already to in-house, who's currently located in seventeen West Main Street. So Yasser and myself are friends, so we are gonna be buying the business from Yasser. So we're planning to convert it from being an in-house coffee to be in a second Bria Coffee coffee shop. So we're planning to keep it exactly the same. In other words, not adding anything extra, still be a coffee shop but under our own brand and under our own mindset of how the coffee should be, which is specialty coffee. So we'll be roasting, continuing to but selling our retail back in Northborough plus the coffee shop. Nothing else will change, so pretty much would be a change in brand. And I also, and I also work as a senior vice president of program management in Westboro and Columbia Tech as well, so I'm very close to the Northborough area.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Board members, any questions? Leslie?
First of all, welcome. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Sounds like Northborough's gonna smell really nice downtown if you're gonna be constantly roasting like that.
So thank you very much for mentioning that. We wish we could definitely roast coffee in Northborough, but we are still gonna continue roasting in Rutland. Yes, that requires requires more space for us to be able to roast directly there.
Okay, okay. Will you still be serving food there? And will the interior change at all?
So great question. So we will be serving the sandwiches, the paninis and the pastries and everything that's really big there, so all of that will stay. We will change minor inside the location, but really it's mostly our logos, and instead of being more of a modern look, it may be more of an industrial farm, farm, farm-like look, because that's our concept, which is more rugged, more wood, less modern. No changes in the structure, the walls, or anything like that at all.
Okay, sounds wonderful. Sounds fantastic.
And I just wanted to add the last thing is my wife and I are very excited to have the opportunity to be with everyone today and, and, you know, and the opportunity to be in Northborough. We've always wanted to be in this side. Again, I work in Westboro, so you know, it's a dream come true to be able to be in this portion of Massachusetts.
Terrific. Board members, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move the board vote to approve the application for a common victular license as submitted by Bria Coffee LLC for premises located at seventeen West Main Street.
Second.
Have a motion by Leslie Rattan and a second by Kristen Wickstead. This will be a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye. So the transfer is, or the application is approved unanimously and Mr. and Mrs. Vaeos, we certainly wish you well and look forward to seeing the business operate here in Northborough.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. Have a great evening, everyone. Have a nice week ahead.
Thank you so much.
Exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Thanks.
And once again, chief, do we have our, yes, we do. I think we have one, right?
I can see one. I could, I'm gonna promote the one, but I
Yep.
I don't see the other.
Yep, that's fine. It's past the hour of seven oh five, and we have Yun Tong Thai Restaurant doing business as name change for all alcoholic beverages restaurant license located at two seventy-eight Main Street. Yun Tong Thai Restaurant to be changed to La Mieta, La Mai, Thai Bistro. Hello?
Hi there. How's everyone doing tonight?
Very good. I'm Jason Perro, Chairman of the Board, and I'm struggling with some of the name pronunciations tonight, so I will invite you to please tell us who you are and the change you're proposing.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kanitha. I am the owner.
And I'm Washeer Asitikon. I am her nephew, and I'll be helping her with the project.
Very good. We have that application in front of us. And this is essentially just a change of name for the, for the business here, so otherwise no changes to operation or people who are managing the business, anything like that. Very good. Can you just briefly describe, if you will, what the business currently is and what changes you might be making in terms of rebranding it?
Of course. So my aunt, she started the restaurant in two thousand. We've been here in Northborough for about that time, and it's been about twenty years, and we love the community, looking to support and betterment of Northborough as well. And the coolest thing is that she was bringing traditional Thai food to Northborough, presenting in appetizers, entrees, you know, as a Thai restaurant. And, you know, twenty years have gone. COVID has been a little bit difficult, so I stepped out. I worked since I was eleven years old at the restaurant. And I went to culinary school, and I worked in the Boston circuit for restaurants. And I'm kind of bringing back a kind of like a, we're gonna be doing a little bit of a rebrand and be doing some fusion style food, the Thai and French cuisine.
Oh, interesting. Interesting. Yeah, yeah. That sounds terrific. Board members, any questions, comments? Leslie?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here. Very exciting. We love your location and we're very happy that you're happy here. Are you planning any other changes at all besides the name change? There's no you said some cosmetic changes to the restaurant, anything in the interior or?
Yeah, so we've filed our files and permits through the building town, fire, and has known that would be changing. It's personally, it's pretty much just the interior of the restaurant. So as you can see, we're kind of the backdrop of the renovations and everything like that. But everything else than that, everything will stay the same. We'll be doing same hours. We'll be offering alcohol and beverages, Thai food, and of course, the new fusion style of menus and everything. But pretty much being the same restaurant and offering more offerings and things like that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. We wish you the best. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Kristen Wickstead.
Hi, Kristen.
Hi. So I was just gonna ask you, the new name, is it pronounced La Mieta, La Mai Thai Bistro? Did I say that right?
Yep.
Okay, and, and can you just tell me why you're changing it to that? I'm just curious.
Yes, of course. So the cool thing is that, um, so Yun Tong, what that means, as my aunt kind of talked about, was it means golden peacock, and golden means kind of like a very beautiful color and prosperity in Thailand. And peacock being the span of the wing means like family and being connected. We believe with the new renovations, we're gonna have a kind of like a newer atmosphere, newer kind of element of events, and we'll be hosting kind of like cooking demonstrations and chef tables and things like that. So La Mieta, La Mai is really cool. In tradition, it's a very classic word that means to be humble and pay attention to small details. It's like an old language that we have in Thai compared to like Latinness to English, and it's a very classic and elegant word. The double entendre, the double meaning, La Mieta, the front part of it actually means the breadcrumbs in French, which is a double meaning. So we, as, you know, my grandmother and my aunt and my mother has always taught me thing, finish every single grain of rice because you don't know how hard people work to get it. And that's kind of like a respect for ingredients, which will be collaborating with like the town's farms. So we'll be working with the Vidians and Tugas and Yaliks and a lot of local ingredients. So we're gonna be doing a lot of farm-to-table in Thai cuisine.
Awesome. What a great answer to that question. Thank you so much.
Superb. Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application to the, to change the doing business as name for the all alcoholic beverages restaurant license for the premises located at two seventy-eight Main Street from Yun Tong Thai Restaurant to La Mieta, La Mai, Thai Bistro.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rattan. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan. And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. So it carries unanimously and is approved. Thank you both for being here this evening, and we look forward to seeing the new La Mieta, La Mai, Thai Bistro. Got it.
Thank you so much, everyone, for having us. Thank you.
Take care.
Have a good night. Good night. And next, it's past the hour of seven fifteen, and we have Kristen Black, Health Agent, for a COVID nineteen update.
She should be coming in. There she is.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board of Selectmen. Good to see you. It's been a while, but I guess we're back to talking about COVID, so here I am. It was way more fun hearing about food. Anyway, so I'm hoping I can share my screen, so just bear with me a minute. I have a very brief presentation. Just wanna walk you a few, a few slides so you can see some numbers. I hope you guys can all see that. Let's see. Does that work for all of you?
Yeah, just go to display setting and swap the view.
Ah, display setting swap. How's that? Any better?
There you go.
Okay, so great. So I'm just gonna briefly cover current case counts. There's been a lot of discussion about mask mandates, and you may be hearing that on the news at different towns. I'll cover vaccination rates and plans for booster shots, and then briefly our COVID nineteen testing options in town. So this is just a screenshot from the Massachusetts. This is the daily dashboard or the COVID nineteen dashboard available online. And just what I want to point out here, so this first on the left with the blue line, this is our seven-day average of COVID nineteen confirmed cases with PCR testing. And so you can see we're sort of, you know, we're climbing, as you're all hearing in the news. And to the right, you can see that our seven-day weighted average percent positivity is climbing. Don't read in too much that it looks like they're sort of dropping back down because that's just an artifact of the date, so we are sort of seeing a steady increase in our cases as well as obviously related to that, the number of positive tests.
Sorry, Kristen, I just wanna check with everyone else. Is everyone seeing the complete screen that's being shared?
No, Kristen, you need to zoom out a little bit. You're zoomed in too tight on your
Yeah, I think it's clipped a little bit.
Let's see. I know this, there's, okay, bear with me. Nope. It's forcing me to maximize with my two screens here, so let me, does that work?
It actually looks good. Yes.
Okay, so sorry about that. So I'm just gonna jump into our current case down. So this is data that's specific to Northborough. The source for this information is again that COVID nineteen dashboard on the town's website. So you just wanna focus that, you know, we are seeing an update. So this, just recently, we have about twenty-five cases over a two-week period, so that's about a case a day. Before, you know, actually more than that, I shouldn't say that. We worried about a case a day. We had a little uptick about a week ago, but we're coming back down. So on average, we're seeing one to two new cases a day, but as you go back to the, even the beginning of August, we only had eight cases over a two-week period. In July, we had nine cases. Chief Parenti will remember back in, you know, we had a period where we had no cases over two-week periods, so we're definitely seeing an increase. Overall, I would say we're seeing both that increase in vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. The state of Massachusetts just summarized the data over the last week. They say about forty percent of the cases they're seeing are in vaccinated individuals, or also known as breakthrough cases. And I just wanna highlight our percent positivity. So this is the number of tests that are coming back positive is starting to creep upwards. So I think we all remember the state when we had the map and it was like red and yellow and, you know, you only went to red if you had a five percent positivity. You know, so we are seeing an uptick, and it's just worth noting that there is that increase. Other communities like the province town, you might have heard about the cluster that was there in July. You know, at that point, they were seeing twelve percent or even higher positivity rates. We're not seeing that, but we are seeing a slight uptick, as are many of our surrounding communities. And just to talk a little bit about mask mandates, I wanna clarify that at this time, there is no mask mandate in town or town buildings other than the original CDC recommend, recommendations that anyone who is unvaccinated individuals, you know, face covering should be worn indoors. But I want you to, you know, be comforted with the fact our task force came back and we are meeting now weekly again, and we are reviewing mask policies and looking at the numbers and what other communities are doing in this area. As well, the medical advisory team is now meeting weekly. And again, that is the, the medical advisory team advises the Northborough and Southborough Public Schools. And they are looking at the trends, provided recommendations. I do wanna update this fourth bullet that you'll see here, the pre-K through eight is going to open up with the previous mask policy. So in Northborough, everyone pre-K through eight, including teachers, will be wearing masks for the start of school. I believe they are scheduling a meeting where they will review that policy, but for the start of school, that's my understanding. The Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee did have a special meeting scheduled tonight at six P M. That was canceled, so that's the update there on my slide. They are also discussing masking at Algonquin Regional High School. At this time, the medical advisory team is recommending that the regional school committee would start with masks, collect data, and then revisit that in mid-September. And that's what we're seeing a lot of many of the schools in our area requiring masks to start. We are seeing a lot of changes. You know, we don't have the social distancing we had before. We're at full occupancy in the schools, and I think everyone just wants to start safe. But that, I think, is still be determined for our high school in town. And just wanted to briefly cover the vaccination rates in Northborough. You know, not too much change since I was last with all of you. You know, overall, we're seeing ninety-five percent vaccination rates for all age categories sixteen and up in town. Our twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds have been lagging, but they are up to ninety-two percent as of last week's report on Thursday regarding that fully vaccinated or those individuals that have received that second shot. It sort of ranges, you know, I don't exactly know why, but we do see like our seventy-five-year-olds only, you know, eighty-two percent are fully vaccinated. So there are some holdouts there that, you know, have not gone for their second shot for one reason or another. And so you could see that that range is slightly, our twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds, eighty-two percent are fully vaccinated. But again, we have some of the best vaccination rates in the state. And that continues to look good, and there's plenty of opportunity for vaccination at local pharmacies. So that's where I wanna talk about booster shots for the immunocompromised individuals. This is all new. And, you know, it was a recent update from CDC. So I have a hyperlink here that, you know, will work for people to get specific information whether or not they would qualify as moderately to severely compromised immune systems. And if so, they would be able to receive that booster shot, and this is only for mRNA vaccines. So if they receive J and J, they wouldn't fall into this category, but either way, we're advising, as does the state. You know, if residents are unsure if they fall into this category, they should definitely speak with their medical provider. And if they do need a vaccine, because they do qualify, you can get those at three locations in town. And there may be doctor's offices as well, but three of our pharmacies, CVS, Walmart, and Wegmans in town are offering COVID nineteen vaccines, or either walk-in or you can schedule online. And there is again another hyperlink for that information, and if anybody has problems in town, they can always call the health department. We're happy to help schedule an appointment for them. So at this current time, CDC is not recommending additional, additional boosters or that third dose for any other populations. But then the big question is, you're hearing it in the news, what about booster shots for twelve years and older? And so this all started stirring right around August eighteenth. So the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services announced a plan for administering booster shots. So the details of this plan, which isn't fully approved yet, is the goal is for people to receive a booster shot beginning in the fall. And we've heard something about like September twentieth is this magical date you hear kicking around. And it would be for eligible individuals who are eligible eight months after their second dose of the mRNA vaccine. So again, either Pfizer or Moderna, not for J and J. And so this would naturally, this plan would naturally follow the same rollout we saw early on. So we would start with our first responders, you know, individuals at our long-term care facilities, healthcare facilities, and go from there. So that plan is subject to authorization by, you know, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, as well as going through the CDC's Advisory Committee. So that plan is subject to authorization by, you know, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, as well as going through the CDC's Advisory Committee. So stay tuned on that, but that's what you're hearing about. And so again, we are trying to plan as a community to make sure booster shots are conveniently located for our residents. And really, the state has yet to announce a full official plan, but our COVID Task Force discussed this last week. We're continuing to meet weekly. We'll be looking to restart, you know, senior center booster clinics if needed, if that need isn't being met by doctor's offices and pharmacies. So we still have our Metro West, our seven-town collaborative. Is still a group that has the ability to order vaccine and we did just meet last week. And we're staying in contact if there's a need to discuss future clinics. So we're all following that very closely. And then lastly.
If I could just ask a couple of questions on that particular topic. You mentioned particularly Pfizer and Moderna, but not J and J. Is there any plan or what's the distinction between those two and the J and J that J and J doesn't have a plan for booster at the moment?
Yeah, I'm not sure of all the details. What I've read is that, you know, J and J, they just don't have enough data yet to provide that recommendation. So CDC is reviewing that, the ACIP. And so it's all about data and that they're reviewing that. So I anticipate that, you know, J and J will have a plan, but they're not ready to announce that at this time. So in the mixing of vaccines, you know, if you are J and J to go to mRNA, you know, one of the Pfizer, Moderna, that's not recommended at this time, but I'm sure by the time those booster shots are starting in September, you know, twentieth or so, we're going to hear a lot more about that in the plan. But right now, we don't know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And so lastly, I just want to talk a little bit about COVID nineteen testing. Obviously, as our numbers really dropped off in May and June, a lot of the testing centers either closed or greatly reduced their hours. But the state does continue to offer drive-through testing at regional express sites. And these are the sites with, that are being run by Project Beacon. The closest located one is in Framingham. It's bounced around a little bit. It does require appointments. Results are typically available in less than twenty-four hours. They come right through to your phone. Really easy, very reliable. I send all residents there when they call and ask. They just do a great job. You don't wait. You drive through with your car and they're doing a great job. They're only open, I believe, Monday to Friday. They're not offering weekend testing like they were back in the winter. But we'll see if the state's going to open that some more. There is also, again, we're just talking about free sites, totally free. There's also a drive-through stop the spread site at Marlboro Hospital that is opening Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, eight A M. to one B M. Those results as well are typically available in less than twenty-four hours. No appointments are required or even available. You just drive up. And again, both of those free sites are PCR testing. So there are still free options. But again, there's many more test locations. I can't say they're all free. There might be a copay. It really depends on people's insurance. And there's a full list. So pharmacies, you know, I believe Carewell Urgent Care in town is offering testing, but the two free ones are listed in the first two bullets. We put that on the town's COVID nineteen webpage under testing. And so that's where I definitely direct residents. We do expect an increased demand on test sites with schools reopening. DESI, there are the Department of Early and Secondary Education and the Mass Department of Public Health recently released, I think this was just on August thirteenth, protocols for responding to COVID nineteen scenarios. And that outlines when a PCR test would be required for a student to return to school, et cetera. So we are expecting that, you know, we're going to have demand on testing. Our goal is to keep all of our departments open and our teachers there and our students, you know, in person. And we are looking at some options, at least starting with possibly with employees to offer rapid PCR testing here in town, using some CARESAC funding. And, but that's a process and we'll definitely keep you in the loop if that comes to fruition. The schools will have access to the free testing. They've signed up for the stay-in test program. And I believe they're going to sign up for the screening as well, where the state is offering free antigen testing in the schools. And that's a again, a very detailed protocol. We're still working through those details. So that's all I have for you.
Great. Thank you very much, Kristen. We appreciate the update and the information. Board members, any questions, comments? Leslie?
Yeah, thank you, Kristen. Do you think that the testing that will be going on at the high school will be kind of the same idea as what, what it was previously? Would you say, and I know the test rates were not, I don't think, as, as they had hoped. What do you see there?
The program that, that, you know, that was recently announced by DESI and DPH, it's a little, it's different. You know, it's, it's really focused at keeping kids in school. So there is this test and stay option where before if you were unvaccinated, you know, so my thirteen-year-old son was exposed to a student and they quarantined the classroom, let's just say. All those kids would go home and they could not come back until either they met that quarantine period or had the negative test. You know, it sort of changed throughout the school year, but you remember, they just went home. There was no option. But given this year, we don't have remote schooling, right? Everything's in person. You know, the state is really turning this around and they're saying, we're going to let those kids go back to school as long as they're, so again, close contacts. As long as they're asymptomatic and they get a negative antigen test for five days in a row, for those five days after exposure. So it's about, you know, and, and I think the data is there to support that because we quarantined a lot of kids. Every school district across the state of Massachusetts quarantined a lot of kids. And I would say ninety-five percent plus never became positive. And so they're saying, you know, we're going to use this antigen, this rapid result, which is pretty effective, you know, in that situation to try to make sure we're not holding all those kids out of school after exposure. So it's a way to test and keep them at school. So North Row, the public schools and the regional schools, they're looking to do that test and stay program. Each district has to decide on that. And also these DESI protocols for responding to COVID nineteen scenarios, if you had kids, was a really long list of symptoms. Like if they had anything, they had to go home and you had to find a test and you missed work and you know, they've really narrowed that test down, the symptomology down. And so if there's sort of mild symptoms, schools can do some testing or could allow them back. So there's, there's sort of changes across the board to really make sure that we're not just like blanket holding everybody out. You know, they're taking measured. They're taking the information and the data to try to figure out how can we keep our kids in school using convenient rapid antigen testing in the school system. So we're just not sending everybody home sort of with the original model of last year. So we've learned a lot and testing is available.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions? Leslie?
I do have one other one. I know that last week I heard that the state education commissioner is going to be requesting permission to be able to mandate masks K through twelve. Do we know what the status of that is?
No. You, you sound like John Cordair, who's like, when's the state going to require it, Kristen? When's the state? You know, so we're just, we, we haven't heard much. So at this, it's individual districts are making those decisions. And so I think we're just, you know, I, I haven't heard, you know, any statewide actions at this point, but I think we'll I'm sure if the numbers change, you know, and there's a need, you know, we would see that at this time, we keep being told that, you know, there, it is what it is. Individual communities can make mask mandates, but I, I haven't heard writings on the wallets coming from the state at this time.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I may, through the chair.
Sure, John.
But just, you know, our approach has been to be consistent with, with the state and the CDC and not to go off on our own unless it was a compelling reason. Obviously, if we have a cluster or an outbreak, then we would be something specific to North Row that would make us do something different. In an ideal world, as I've stressed, is, you know, the preference is, you know, you don't want one school district requiring a mask, another not, one town requiring masks and right next door, it doesn't. It confuses everybody. And so the feedback that we give consistently to DPH and our legislative delegation all the time is, but just be consistent, you know. I get that there may be specific things that are happening, like what happened in, with the cluster in Province Town. But otherwise, you know, you've got towns very similar, you know, one deciding to mask, another one deciding not to mask. We want everybody to be safe and we want to err on the side of caution. But it just creates confusion. And so one of the things that we're always seeking is some, some level of consistency from the state when at all possible. They seem to be less, they seem to be more hesitant to do that this time around, for whatever reason. But, you know, we will continue to make the appropriate decisions that are right for our community. And again, it'll be based on the data, the information and kind of where we are relative to everybody else. But again, my sense is, to the extent unless there's something compelling, is to be consistent with, with the state when we can. So it, they're making it more difficult this time around. So but we'll see. As, as Kristen said, we're meeting weekly again. And so if things change, border health working through Kristen with the task force will, will make recommendations that are appropriate.
Thank you, John. If there are no other questions. And I see none. Kristen, once again, thank you very much. We appreciate all the detail and the update.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
It is now past the hour of seven twenty-five P M. We have William Liver, police chief. First item for the chief is the appointment of Spencer Fuller as a police officer. And we are bringing Spencer in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Spencer. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Glad you can be here this evening for this reason.
Absolutely.
I'll turn it over to Chief Liver to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before you please meet Spencer Fuller. Spencer was the last candidate that we offered a job to for open patrol vacancy. Spencer is currently probably very anxious right now because he's missing some of his nighttime academy training, which is active shooter, I believe, tonight. So I think he changed from B D U's into a shirt and tie real quick for this. So, and he's got to get back to his training. So he's originally from Framingham, was in Whitemanville, and he's currently in a very unique program at Framingham State University. It was one of the first, I believe, if maybe still the first state universities that partnered with the Mass Criminal Justice Training Council. And they have a six-year program where you get a master, a bachelor's of criminal justice. They vet them and do a full background check and they progress then into a fully certified Massachusetts Police Academy. And when they graduate from the Police Academy, which will he will be doing in a couple of weeks, they are fully certified as police officers. And then the third year of the program consists of obtaining a master's degree. So he's just about to graduate from the academy. So it was a great find for us, a great guy. His background was flawless. He's done all his testing and he's passed. I spoke with the academy director up there. She had nothing but praise for him. I spoke highly of him. And we can't wait to get him on board. So with further ado, without further ado, I'll ask, turn it over to you for Spencer and ask, you want to ask him any questions? There you go.
Thank you very much, chief. I was, as the representative on the Board of Slickman, I was sitting in on the Police Department interviews for a number of candidates and we had several good candidates and it speaks highly to you, Spencer, that you among that, that great crop of candidates, you were a standout among them. So we're very, very pleased that you're going to be with us and we look forward to your completing the academy, joining the force and of course, continuing to, to complete your master's degree. So well done. Members of the board, any questions? Leslie?
Esther, thank you very much. Thank you for wanting to work with us in North Row. That's great news for us. And I'm very impressed by your credentials. You were awarded your bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Pittsburgh State with negative commowny honors. That always says a lot. So I think that's wonderful. Thank you very much for that. Obviously, you're very dedicated to your studies and strive to do well. And the fact that you also wore the full cost of your training and equipment for the academy says a lot about you as well, as far as your dedication and your desire to, to do this kind of work. So we really appreciate it and thank you. Thank you very much for wanting to be here.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Great. Spencer, if you'd like to offer just a few words, that's fine. If you need to get back to what you're doing, that's fine, too.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm extremely grateful. I'm going to give the town of North Row and the North Row Police Department a hundred and ten percent of what I have every day, every shift, every second, every minute. I'm just very excited to be a part of this team, part of this community. I'm very, very excited to start this new chapter of my life and there's nowhere I'd rather be working than in North Row. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Very good. Thank you, Spencer. Board members, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Spencer Fuller as a full-time police officer effective August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as recommended by the police chief.
And a second. We have a motion by Julian Hirsch, second by Scott Rogers. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. So it carries unanimously. Congratulations, Spencer, and we look forward to seeing you on the streets of North Row.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it from all of you. It means a lot to me.
Very good. Carry on.
Thank you.
And next up, again, Police Chief William Liver for the appointment of Brian Griffin as Police Lieutenant.
Again, Mr. Chair, thank you. It's been a long time coming. It's been over a year since we've had a lieutenant with the retirement of Lieutenant Galvin. Brian has joined us here with family in tow. All four of his boys and his wife. So our process for the lieutenant's interview was on the tenth of this month. And again, Chairman Perro was a participant along with two chiefs near it, Chief Paulson-Soutrow, Chief Creepel from Grafton. One of the reasons I asked those is that basically the departments are the same size and the same makeup. There's a chief, a lieutenant in basically the same number of offices. So that the makeup of the departments are the same and the lieutenant's function pretty closely. So they did. Brian, both candidates, Jim Sesny and Brian, did very well. They were excellent. Neck and neck is the best way I can put it. I mean, basically, maybe a point or two separated the two of them. And then it becomes my recommendation and our promotional policy. And I took several factors into consideration. Some of them being that Brian has basically functioned in almost every position in the department except lieutenant. A patrol officer, a sergeant, a detective, a detective sergeant, dare officer, he's our evidence officer, among many other things. He has basically done all of the functions. So I lent my recommendation to Brian and therefore he is the successful candidate. And I'm therefore requesting that you appoint Brian to the rank of lieutenant.
Very good. Thank you very much, chief. Brian, would you like to say a few words? We certainly appreciate your long record of service in the this is certainly an appropriate promotion.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, board. Like, I would like to first thank Chief Liver for giving me this opportunity. I'm you know, really excited to start a new position and new role and just really honored. When I was watching Spencer get sworn in, I kind of saw myself twenty-two years ago, how excited he was. And I'm, I'm excited about this new position. I'm looking forward to working with our younger officers and helping Chief Liver lead the department for the future. I can't, also, I got to also thank the women and men that I work with. Their professionalism is what makes me proud to say where I work. I love saying where I work. And it's because of the professionalism that we have amongst our officers and dispatchers. And I can't forget the crew behind me. They can smile. They're all like stone-faced back there. But my wife, my four boys, my parents, all my siblings. There's probably a lot of people watching tonight and that's probably it's good we're not all there because it wouldn't be enough cheers for my family. But I'm just looking forward to the next chapter in my career and I'm looking forward to, to starting. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you, Brian. Board members, any questions or comments? Leslie?
Well, I first of all, this is so impressive, Brian, but not surprising. As chief said, you've done so many things in town and including coaching, wanted to add that as well. You are obviously so dedicated to your community, as is your brother Bill. And your wife, I know one of my kids had your wife as a teacher at the middle school and one of my other kids had your brother Bill's wife as a teacher. Peaslee, it's just your family is so dedicated to the town. Your parents are here and just do amazing things themselves. And it just shows how dedicated you are to our community in particular, that you're not just here for a year or two and moving on to something else. That you really are dedicated to the town of North Row and have always done your best. And you're so well-regarded and well-respected and And you're so well-regarded and well-respected, and you're the kind of person that we need here. You represent our town very, very well, and we're just thrilled that you're being promoted to this position and is well deserved. So thank you very much, and welcome to your family. It's great to see them here. Great family. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the kind words, Leslie.
Any other board members? Do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Detective Sergeant Brian Griffin as Police Lieutenant effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, as recommended by Police Chief.
Moved by Kristin Wickstead and seconded by Leslie Rattan. This is a roll call vote. Kristin Wickstead?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rattan?
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye. Carries unanimously. Congratulations, Lieutenant Griffin.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mister Chair, if I may just for a moment?
Yes.
I've been on vacation for the last ten days, and I resuming my trip back to Maine at the conclusion of the meeting. But Brian has been acting in my place, and so trial by fire, you know, hurricane bearing down on us, a little later activity and warnings today. And tomorrow he gets to hit the ground running by fixing the leak in the report room ceiling.
Good to know. Thanks, Chief. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Congratulations, Brian.
Congratulations.
It's now past the hour of seven thirty-five P M., and we have Public Works Director Scott Sharpentier. Informational presentation regarding the completed water and sewer rate study. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Thank you, board members. Chief Paranty, can you promote Dave Fox?
He's already in.
I'm already ahead of you. Come on.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Mister Fox.
Good evening.
So this is not part of our normal process that we go through for our water and sewer rate adjustments we look at annually. It starts with a formal rate study being done that was done by Raftellus Financial. That's who Dave Fox works with. We then present a draft form of that with combined with the capital and operational budgets to the Water Sewer Commission in an informal meeting. The rate study is then finalized based on that informal meeting. We come before the Board of Selectmen to discuss the the rate study, and then subsequent to that, the Water Sewer Commissioners have a rate study hearing, which will be tomorrow night. Once the hearing is complete, the process going forward is that we do a public mailing in accordance with our regulations to all customers, so they're aware of the rate adjustments. And these rates would go in effect for usage beginning on or about October first. So water sewer departments are both enterprise funds. They are funded one hundred percent by the rates paid by the users. They're essentially two small businesses that their goal is to not lose money and not to make too much money. So it's a it's a it's a balancing act annually. One that we work hard at, Dave and I, as well as the commission. I'll start with the simplest and the most complicated. The simplest and most complicated is the sewer side. As everybody knows, at this meeting, we are in litigation with the City of Marlborough. That that litigation is not completed yet. We're in a essentially a holding pattern, waiting for the for actions by the court to realize what and where our assessment from the City of Marlborough is going to lie. So we've undergone a series of substantial rate adjustments over the past ten years on the sewer enterprise fund. We've implemented five twenty percent rate increases and a couple five percents. So those rates have slightly greater than doubled over the past decade. Our rate study currently presents a zero percent increase on the sewer side. We want to wait and see where things fall with the determination by by the by the litigation before we propose any rate adjustments on the sewer side. The water side is is a very challenging this past year. We purchase all of our water from the M W R A. That attributes to a greater than fifty percent of our annual operating budget, so it is by far the one largest line item. Last year, we suffered a pandemic throughout throughout the world, but you know, Northborough and the M W R A customers, it hit them a little uniquely in that large users in the M W R A system, such as Boston, Cambridge, the Metro West area, some of the larger industrial users, they they did not use much water. They closed down bedroom communities or small, smaller, more residential users like us. We used more water. Everybody was home. The M W R A runs very similar to what an enterprise fund does. They base their their budget is based on solely on the rates paid by their users, us. So when Boston uses less and we use more, our percentage of overall use increases as it did this year in F Y twenty-two. So our typical increases through the M W R A can be between four and eight percent, maybe. This past year, F Y twenty-two, we realized a twenty-four percent rate increase from the M W R A, and that's again, that's greater than fifty percent of our operating budget. At town meeting this past May, we allocated a substantial portion of funds from the retained earnings from the fund balance to help overcome that large M W R A increase. But again, we have gone through the rate analysis, and currently we're proposing a five percent volumetric rate increase and a one dollar increase on the base charge. I'm going to let Dave talk a little more about the industry-wide and the base charge ratios and stability in revenue. Do you like Dave?
Sure. Thanks, Scott. That was the
Could you just introduce yourself and your
Sure, sure. No problem at all. Yeah, my name is Dave Fox. I'm the Senior Manager with Raftellus. Raftellus is the largest firm in the country focusing on waters, sewer rate and financial management consulting services, other things, but that is my area of expertise. I've been working with the town now for about the last five years or so in some capacity. I've been in front of you before, talking to you about the annual rate increases. Unfortunately, it's something we're talking about every year. But fortunately, that is the case. You do talk about this every year. I work with some communities that they're only looking at rates every few years, or if they are looking at rates every year, they're only thinking about the upcoming fiscal year. They're not kind of planning for the future. And the town of Northborough does something that's that's incredible and very valuable, and that you're you're doing rate studies every year, and you're also thinking about not just the fiscal year you're about to enter into, but four years thereafter and kind of planning with the best information we have today. And although Scott talked about some unfortunate increases in costs, mainly the M W R A assessment on the water side, you've been having and maintaining financial viability within your your water and your sewer funds by having a reserve fund balance. And the reason you maintain a reserve fund balance is to to offset any any unknown circumstances. And this is, you know, COVID nineteen is certainly an unknown circumstance, and unfortunately, it resulted in unknown cost to you or a cost that you were not expecting more so than than we were forecasting. But that's why we we have those reserve funds sitting there. So although we are talking about an increase, like Scott said, no increase on the sewer side, just given the uncertainty around that on the water, we are talking about a five percent volumetric increase and a one dollar increase on the the quarterly fixed charge. It's going up from fifteen dollars to sixteen dollars. The kind of, what does that mean? To kind of put that in a context a little bit for you. The typical residential customer in Northborough for both water and sewer, their quarterly bill will go up about five dollars and sixty-five cents per quarter or about six dollars per day, or sorry, six cents per day. So when you're talking about kind of percentages, you know, five percent increase, it really helps just to put it in dollars and cents, and we're talking about six cents more per day for the typical residential customer for both water and sewer surface, which which is incredible. I mean, you know, this is an anomalous year, given what you're dealing with it with the M W R A assessment. And that rate increase of five percent is right in line with with the national average over the last ten, fifteen years. We've seen annual increases in water rates of about five percent. So even given the unfortunate circumstances with the M W R A, you're still right in line with that national average, and thankfully, you know, Scott and his team are thinking about this every year, maintaining reserve fund balances so we can kind of weather this storm and hopefully, for a number of reasons, get back to some sort of normalcy soon. So don't want to take up too much time. Hopefully, that's enough of an overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you very much, Dave. Scott Sharpentier, do you have anything more you wanted to present at this moment?
Well, Dave touched on something that's important that I'd like the board to understand. You know, you're you're familiar with the financial trend monitoring that that John and the financial team does. The the capital planning, the six-year capital planning that we do through the other boards and commissions, the the Water Sewer Commission, they they parallel that exactly. Our the rate study models that that Dave and I work with and present through the Water Sewer Commission present a six-year capital plan going forward. They present a five-year operating budget going forward. The percentage increases annually for each one of those line items you see is based on historical trending information, and that's how we look at where the rates are going to go in the coming five years. What's the fund balance going to be? When does debt fall off? What do we have coming down the pipeline for for cash reserves to to purchase capital projects? It it the water suicide matters itself in parallel with the financial side that John and his team runs with. So it's it's a good team effort that we all put forth.
Thank you, Scott. Board members, any questions? And seeing none, I will ask a question. Could you, this is essentially an increase in water, no increase in the sewer in part because of the uncertainty regarding the intermunicipal agreement impasse at the moment with the City of Marlborough. Could you just speak briefly about essentially the reserves and the financial planning that is in place and allowing us to move forward if and when that is resolved?
Certainly. We have financial targets for our reserve accounts. It's approximately twenty percent of the operating budget, a seventy-five days of operating dollars. That's our goal in our in our fund balance. The sewer balance is is quite a different story in that we've been stashing away money in the event of a settlement occurring. But on the on the water side, you know, we we increased that that twenty percent reserve going forward when we see capital projects coming down down the pipe. You know, we were we were above twenty twenty percent previously, and it allowed us to absorb a, you know, a substantial M W R A assessment increase by drawing down that fund balance and not passing on that. I mean, if it's a, it was a twenty-four percent increase by the authority, and that's over half of our budget, that would have been a twelve percent increase to to the ratepayers without any any regular, you know, inflationary increases. So, you know, good financial decisions resulted in it being a lighter impact on the on the ratepayers.
Great. Thank you. Leslie, you have a question? Sorry, you're muted, Leslie.
Hi. Does the M W R A typically have any annual increases? And is there a pattern to it? Is it pretty much a dependable thing that they're going to increase the assessment by five, six percent type of thing?
Yes, the M W R A typically has an increase every single year. They due to COVID, they try to reduce that that increase, but the twenty-five percent of twenty-four percent that you're experiencing is not due to a twenty-four percent increase in M W R A's costs. It's due to your allocation of costs because of, like Scott mentioned, Boston shutting down and everybody at Northborough being home and using more water respectively, and your share of those costs increasing. Really hopeful that although M W R A's costs are going to continue to increase, their costs are not going to continue to increase by twenty-four percent. You know, maybe in the magnitude of two to five percent, and your allocation will hopefully come back down to to normal or some some sense of of normalcy going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, John?
Probably the best analogy to this is the regional high school where they have a budget, right? But our share of that budget is based on how many kids we send. So even though the budget's only gone up three percent, if we have more kids from Northborough going and less kids from Southborough going, our assessment increase goes up substantially. That's basically what happened, except this is sort of a one-time issue with the M W R A. You know, the the user profile changed completely. So we got hit very hard. But that's not a trend. We're not expecting to see that happen next year. In fact, I am cautiously optimistic that we might see that reverse as these larger users come back on online, and Northborough's usage goes back to more normal, that we will see a bit of a reversal to get back to to where we ought to be. But just stressing both Scott and Dave's point, this is why you maintain reserves. Essentially, the town maintains emergency reserves and stabilization of free cash. The enterprise funds maintain reserves as fund balance, undesignated, unreserved fund balance. And that allowed them, allowed the town to manage this one-time hit that would have been impossible to predict. So as things get back to normal, you know, you draw from your rainy day fund, you then want to make sure you build it back up, and we maintain the percentages according to industry standard, and that's why we we do this planning. That's why we do what we do. The only other thing I would stress is, again, just the the whole microcosm of the larger budget. People need to understand everything that goes into providing those services, regulatory expenses, legal expenses, capital expenses, improvements to the pipes, the projects that we have and the going on right now with regard to rehabbing the water tower. All those expenses are built into those rates. And just like on the town side, you don't want to wait till you have to replace five schools and a fire station all at once. You want to make sure you're planning that out because you want to smooth the impact on the rates. And so you want to have reasonable, relatively predictable increases instead of just kind of hiding and then when you're forced to, you know, making these significant rate jumps, which you'll see some towns will wait three, five years, try to hold the rates, and then they're, you know, they're they're doubling their rates. Backing up a little bit in terms of the sewer, we increased the rates in in anticipation of the fact that, you know, with the expanded and renovated plant in Marlborough, that we are going to have to pay our fair share of that. The fact that we don't have an intermunicipal agreement is the only reason why we haven't paid our fair share of that. And that is what is the subject of litigation. So the town made through good planning and projections and forecasts, we made assumptions about where the rates are going to wind up so that when the litigation settles, hopefully, we are our rates and our reserves are set at a level that will allow us to, again, stabilize and maintain a normal, regular increase. One thing that Scott didn't mention that he usually talks about every year is, you know, things like our water rates. The tough thing for us is if we're doing our job and we're complying, we're selling less product because it's all about conservation, right? So in a way, we kind of cost ourselves more money because all the fixtures, all of the leak detection, all the things that we do to conserve consumption of water and to minimize the amount of sewer with low-flow devices and things like that are mandated, it means we sell less water. Right? So it all factors in. It has an impact on the rates, which is why you see, as Dave pointed out, you know, a national average of about five percent. That's what you need to maintain, you know, the the personnel wage increases, the overhead, the indirect costs, as well as the capital cost in a market that isn't necessarily growing. So it might be shrinking because of conservation efforts. So it's complicated. It requires a lot of great planning. And like everything, it's data-driven for us. We're not making this up. We don't just assume what's going to happen. It's based on the information that's all contained in the rate study. People can read through it. They can ask questions about it. And I think the the proof is in the pudding, the fact that we have not only just a stabilized rate structure and increases, but the fact that we make regular investments in the capital. So we're not, it's not a shell game. And and it's not a case where, you know, you can keep your rates artificially low if you simply don't take care of your system, but you're going to pay that piper at some point, and it will cost you more down the road. So doing it at regular investments, regular intervals, making sure that you're smoothing out things so you don't get these giant rate spikes. You know, that's the type of planning that we do. But it also means coming to you and to the public with what is a realistic necessary rate increase, not an artificially low rate increase that isn't sustainable. So the costs are the costs. The numbers are all there, and as as Scott pointed out, we don't generate a profit. We maintain a little bit of fund balance for 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 safety for us to deal with unexpected. But this is a for all intents and purposes, it's a not-for not-for-profit operation here. Our goal is to break even, to make sure that we have enough liquidity to deal with unexpected situations. So so just again, just stressing the planning that goes into this type of rate study.
Thank you very much, John. Appreciate all the work that goes into this. Again, very unpredictable circumstance over the past year, but we were well-positioned with the management of our enterprise funds to to cope with it in a way that doesn't extraordinarily impact the the ratepayers. And hopefully, we can continue to do that. Yes, Joe?
Mister Chairman, if I can make one more comment, just to be clear, there is no there is no reason that this needs to be presented to the Board of Selectmen. There's no legal requirement whatsoever. In fact, you have no role. The purpose of this meeting is just like many things we do. We don't, we want to make sure that under people understand the process and the data and why we're recommending what we are. The, the formal public hearing, as Scott said, is tomorrow night with the Water Sewer Commission. This is just a, a public outreach. We just want to make sure people understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. And if they have a question, we're more than happy to answer it. So it's just an informational process that we put in place in Northborough just to make sure that, that we're, we're communicating clearly.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Board members, any final questions? Seeing none, I will just let people know that as John mentioned, Water and Sewer Commissioners are meeting tomorrow night at 5:00. At the time, right?
5:30.
5:30 PM. The agenda is posted on the town calendar on the town website and there is a link for Zoom if you would like to participate, that is a public hearing. So with that, I think we're complete on this item. Dave Fox, thank you very much for joining us this evening. We appreciate your, your help.
Thank you, Dave.
Always a pleasure, thank you.
Good day.
Take care.
And it's past the hour 7:45 PM. And next on the agenda is once again DPW Director Scott Sharpentier with an update on the Bartlett Street traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members. I have a PowerPoint presentation I will attempt to share. Let's see if I'm successful.
Well, Scott is bringing that up, just so everybody's aware, the packet information of everything we're covering tonight is available on the DPW traffic website. So if anybody would like to pull that down or follow along, the presentation isn't on there because I was on vacation last week and we finished that today. But the information that it's based upon is in the packet and available on the website.
Thank you, John.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll go through the slides briefly. John has some at the tail end, giving a more thorough update on, on some of the details. So early on, there was some concerns brought up by, by, by citizens of tractor-trailers parking up and down Bartlett Street. As you remember, this board approved a no-parking restriction all along Bartlett Street from Route 20 to the town line. In advance of that, we had installed the, the granite blocks to prevent a, a known turnoff and kind of resting spot for the tractor-trailers. And we also installed no parking signs along both sides of Bartlett Street throughout the limits. The exit facility, of, of the three facilities we're going to be talking about, the 330, 350 Bartlett Street, which is Amazon and FedEx, as well as 301 across the street from that has, I think, four tenants. And then Adu pile at 210. We reached out to all of these facility operators, requested that they install signage, advising their drivers of the proper routes. So what you see here is at the Amazon FedEx exit, they installed the signs, some pavement markings, as well as some signage across the street. You can see the, the, the center image, required Amazon truck route with an arrow to the, to the right. That sign is in the background of the pavement markings on the, on the, on the driveway exit. These were installed by Amazon in conjunction in concert with us, the town. Adu pile at 210 Bartlett Street did the same. They, they operate a little bit differently. As John, I believe, has discussed in the past, all their drivers are actually employees of the company. So they have a direct line to the drivers, but they also agreed to install this signage at their driveway exit just to reinstate to the drivers which directions they should be going. As did 301 Bartlett Street. This is the segment, you can see the Amazon building in the background. This is the exit to 301 Bartlett Street. That's why you see the arrows in the other direction. It's, it's directing all the tractor-trailer traffic heading toward Cedar Hill Road. One of the concerns that was expressed early and, early on when Amazon moved into 330, 350 Bartlett was that a lot of tractor-trailers that were trying to enter the facility taking a left were driving past the facility because the full, the permanent sign wasn't installed yet. Working with Amazon, Amazon put up the temporary sign you see on the left-hand side, directing tractor-trailers coming from the Cedar Hill Marlboro side that the left turn is getting into, getting into the Amazon facility. They also have their permanent signage, the grass isn't looking so good, but the sign is. It's, it's lit, it's, it's visible from both sides, it went on both sides. That's on top of that crest that you see on the right-hand side. Once the facilities came on board and, and were operational, we reached out to Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC, to conduct traffic counts. Our goal and objective was to capture what tractor-trailers or what the truck traffic was in and about the Bartlett Street area. There's already a couple of truck exclusions in the neighborhood. Collins Road is a truck exclusion. You'll see Collins Road located between numbers four and one. Four is on Brigham Street by the golf course and one is over on Ridge. The, they have a current truck exclusion. There's also a truck exclusion on, on Maple Street between Ridge and Route 20. In addition to the neighborhood truck counts, traffic counts, we also wanted to capture some in and around the new facilities in anticipation of further studies to be conducted. It's a good opportunity to get, capture the same data in the same window. So you have a good picture of everything going on in the neighborhood. You'll see that in locations five, eight, seven, and six. When we're capturing the, the traffic information for the traffic counts, these are the different vehicle classes that are observed. And what we're seeking is to reach a greater than 5% of heavy commercial vehicles. A heavy commercial vehicle is defined by the Federal Highway Administration as everything from five and up. So you see the second row, the little green camper, that's a single-unit two-axle truck, number five, a vehicle class five, all the way through 13, which hopefully we never see in town. But tho- those are all the vehicle classifications that are, that are, that are considered under a heavy commercial vehicle count. The results we received, we got from the traffic count, I mean, it's important to, to understand what these, what these results are. The heavy commercial vehicle percentage, again, is all those classifications, five through 13. And the percentages you, you see for each of the eight locations is whatever day it was the absolute highest. So for example, 43 Ridge Road at 7.7%. That is not necessarily the same day that 100 Ridge Road had 6.2. This is just during a, a two-week period in May, what was the highest percentage of vehicle classifications, five and, five and higher. The tractor-trailer percentages here on this table are pulled off of that same day. For vehicle classes, you see eight and higher, eight, nine, and 10, essentially. We're not going to see on tandems here, but for tractor-trailers, eight, nine, and 10. Those are the percentages you see in the, in the middle column. And the total volume count is just all vehicles counted at the different locations. In order to be eligible for a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, which is governed by Mass DOT, you have to exceed 5% for those vehicle classifications. And you'll see that 43 Ridge Road at 7.7 exceeds that percentage. Our goal and objective is to make a request to Mass DOT seeking a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Ridge Road based on the data you see here, the 7.7%. We're also going to ask Mass DOT to allow a truck exclusion on Maple Street, specifically at location three. And I'm going to go back to the math briefly. So location three was just under 5%. That's on Maple Street between Ridge Road and Bartlett. There is no truck exclusion there currently. There is a truck exclusion between, on Maple Street between Ridge and Route 20. Having a truck exclusion on Ridge and Collins and half of Maple Street, it doesn't make any sense to not have one on the second half of Maple Street. A tractor-trailer goes down that road, they have no place to turn. We're going to request Mass DOT consider allowing the Maple Street truck exclusion to be throughout the length of Maple Street. It's close to 5%. It's 4.9%. And we're hoping that we complete the case to allow a truck exclusion throughout Maple Street as well as Ridge Road. CMRPC visited, met with the planning board and discussed several traffic calming mechanisms.
Sorry, Scott, if I could just interrupt with a question quickly.
Of course.
To go back to that. Part of the reason for proceeding to request a vehicle exclusion on those roads is because the alternate routes lie entirely within the town borders, is that right?
Yes, the only way we're allowed to have a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on, on a roadway in Northborough is if the alternate routes all lie within our community or if they go into another community, we have that community's written approval to allow it. We've reached out to our neighboring communities seeking a, a, a alternate route for location five between Bartlett Street between 20 and Lyman. Both of our neighboring communities responded in writing that they would not allow an alternate route through their, through their communities as Westboro and Marlboro.
Right, that's, just wanted to make that clarification, thank you.
Sure. So there's a lot of different traffic calming mechanisms and methods that planning agencies have in their toolbox and, and recommend. Some of them are crosswalk improvements to alert drivers of, of crosswalk use. There are other ones, bike lanes, there are, you know, pavement marking narrowings, there's bump outs, pedestrian bump outs. So we have two crosswalks within the, sort of the target area along Bartlett Street. I, what, what area I mean is between Route 20 and Lyman Street. This is one of the crosswalks. This is the one right at the Algonquin Regional High School at Maple Street. We've installed the rectangular rapid flashing beacons you see here. Those, these are currently installed. The wheelchair ramp, the wheelchair ramps at this location will be installed later this week. We have the flashing beacons and have installed them further down at Stur, the Sturbrook Crossing, Sturbrook Trail. And another mechanism I just mentioned for traffic calming is installation of bike lanes. We had our, our traffic engineer do some, some measurements and lay out a, a possible bike lane along, along Bartlett Street. You'll see here from the Algonquin Regional High School to just before Cedar Hill Street. The reason it doesn't continue to the town line and, and meet up with the, the Marlboro bike lanes is there's a lane, there's a pavement width issue. The pavement isn't wide enough to have a dedicated bike lane, it would have to be a shared lane. And in lieu of proceeding with striping this bike lane or implementing a box widening program to allow a dedicated bike lane, we're waiting on the completion of the walking audit that's going to be done by CMRPC that I'll discuss in a little bit. Again, they, there are a multiple, a multitude of traffic calming mechanisms that planning agencies can recommend. Bike lanes are a good one. You know, you take that solid white edge line, you push it in so you narrow the lane a little bit. You have striped bike lanes. It gives the, the visual impression of a narrower lane and it has a, a result of, of slowing traffic often. We also had our traffic consultant do a safety speed zone study. The focus of the safety speed zone was the interaction of at-risk users and experienced drivers at the high school along the, along Bartlett Street. So you'll see the heavy yellow line outlining the limits of the safety speed zone study. This study considers a, a lot of facets. It's an engineering study. The protocols are defined in, in the, in the state regulations on what the traffic engineering study should include. They evaluate crash data. They do speed analysis on how fast cars are going. Identify what the at-risk users are. In this case, it's a high school, other cases it could be a recreational facility. And then base recommendations on that analysis. The speed information that was found, you see here before you, posted speed limit is 35 miles an hour. The average is very close, you know, as, as I would expect, you know, north of the high school, maybe between 20 and the high school where the roadway is somewhat narrow. The speed, the average speed is right where the speed limit is when you get past Bartlett Street. You know, going towards Sturbrook and, and Lyman, the pavement width, thickness, the pavement is a little bit wider. So you tend to have a, a higher speed. Again, this kind of parallels what I was saying earlier. When you institute a bike lane, you narrow the lane. Narrowing the lane gives you, has the result of lowering speeds. So you see the results of the speed study. The 85th percentile speed is a, a speed of, of importance when it comes to speed studies. If you're doing a speed study to consider reposting of a speed limit, the reposting of the speed limit needs to be in accordance with the 85th percentile. That's not the intent of this study. The intent of this study was for a speed safety zone. So again, the results of the study, we see that the 85th percentile is 40 miles an hour. Again, the study was not done for a, a, a speed posting consideration. It was for a safety zone, so that's not a concern. The speed safety zones are defined by Mass DOT is requiring to be, required to be 20 miles an hour. The limits are, are recommended to be 700 feet in each direction. That's to capture and reduce the speed where the interface with the at-risk users are at the high school. So 700 feet in each direction from the high school. In addition, similar to a school zone, but having this be a speed zone, you focus those speed limits, the speed zone during the times of, of at-risk interface, which is at this, a school arrival and, and departure time. So you, you shadow that window as you would a school zone in and around when kids get there and then when kids are leaving. So based on the recommendations of the study and the findings, these are the proposed locations for the speed loan, the speed signs, the safety zone signs and the speed limit signs. You want to tell a driver, you know, when the lights are flashing, you need to reduce to 20 miles an hour. And then when they're out of the zone, you need to let them know they get back up to 35. So that's why you see speed limit signs on each side of the road. If you drive up and down the road, you'll see white rectangles painted out with DS on the road right now. We mark these out for dig safe in the event the, the board chooses to move forward with, with recommendations tonight so that we can be cleared for installation. The installation is relatively quick. It's very similar to the crosswalk signs. They're solar-powered, remotely activated and, and adjusted. So in the event the board chooses to, to move forward, we can, we can mobilize on this pretty quickly. John, do you want to go through some of the?
Yeah, I'm happy to go through. So Scott is going to spend a little bit more time on the next item on the agenda, which is specifically the safety zone, which the board will be asked to take a position on tonight. But it's an integral part of sort of the approach to the area and dealing with some of the concerns that have been expressed. But just by way of summary here in terms of, because we've been at this for a while and it's been an incredible amount of work and time and energy and resources have been dedicated to addressing the concerns in this area. Scott covered, you know, the, all of the signage work that we've done and working collaboratively with the various facilities down there to make sure that the signage is absolutely clear. So it's not a question of whether or not people understand what's expected of them. Right down to the signage, we worked with them to put signage across the street from their driveway on town property, which is a rather unique approach, something we haven't done before. The term restrictions have all been identified. Scott didn't have a graphic of this, but we also added directional signage that was installed at the intersection of Bartlett and Lyman, as well as Cedar Hill and Bartlett, directing folks to 495 through the preferred route. Next slide. It's important to remind folks that early on, we did reach out and we had some discussions with Amazon. We were successful based on some of the initial analysis that was done by staff. We were successful in getting Amazon to agree to provide the town with $80,000 in mitigation funds. A lot of the work that you just heard about from Scott, the flashing light. A lot of the work that you just heard about from Scott, the flashing lights and the, uh, the safety zone, uh, speed study. Those are funded from the mitigation funds that Amazon provided to the town. And they weren't any, under any obligation to do that. That's something that we were able to negotiate with them. But those funds have been used for the, uh, flashing crosswalk enhancements. The safety zone speed study that we talked about as well as installation of any equipment. So the signage, the flashing lights, uh, the flashing crosswalk, all that is being paid for out of these, um, mitigation funds. Uh, the engineering for the bike layout has been completed and installation is, uh, pending. Um, and then, uh, the last, uh, item under there, the flashing crosswalk equipment at the Sturbrook Trail entrance. It says installation is pending. I found out from Scott, uh, late this afternoon that that installation is actually complete. It was done and wrapped up today. So that's actually been completed. As we mentioned, all the traffic counts that have been, uh, been worked on over the summer months. Uh, we believe it resulted in Ridge Road meeting the minimum five percent, uh, truck traffic. And so we will be seeking a truck exclusion. We did this study a few years back. Ridge Road did not meet the minimum and by law and regulation, we could not put a truck exclusion in. Um, so we do meet it now. So, uh, that's nothing the board needs to vote this evening. Uh, that needs to get packaged up and we'll come back to the board for your approval and submission. Uh, but we just want to be clear to you that the counts are done. Uh, we meet the minimum and, uh, and we are putting the engineering package together to mass DOT, uh, to pursue that, uh, truck exclusion for Ridge Road. And that end of Maple, because as Scott pointed out, there's no, there's no purpose for a truck to be down there. If, it's literally a dead end for them if Ridge Road has a truck exclusion on it. Um, want to remind the board and the public as well that the Board of Selectmen proposed a compression break, a Jake break bylaw at town meeting, which was approved. We continue to wait, uh, for the Attorney General's, uh, Office, uh, approval for that. Uh, when that gets approved, that is another tool in the toolbox that would come back for the board for possible implementation on, uh, on Bartlett Street. I mentioned the crosswalk enhancement to Sturbrook as, uh, is, as now completed. Uh, these are things that, uh, action items that we're still in the process on. The bike lane installation is something, again, as Scott said, we've done the engineering. We know what the widths are. We know where it can go. Um, we want to wait for the post occupancy traffic study to see how that intersects and plays with whatever the CMRPAC comes up with. Um, as I indicated, we're going to pursue the truck exclusion on, uh, on Ridge Road. And then the last big piece for us, um, is the post occupancy traffic study. And so this is something we negotiated with, uh, Amazon. They've agreed to fund it. It'll actually be funded through a combination of uh, grant monies that the town was able to sought and was able to obtain through the CMR PC. And the balance of the study costs will be paid for by Amazon. And essentially, uh, it includes analysis of turning movements, speed, volume, the types of vehicles. As Scott mentioned, a walking audit will be done. There'll be a comparison of the current data, uh, 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 relative to what was presented during the permitting phase for, for these projects. And then ultimately what we'll receive, uh, from the CMR PC is a, uh, a, a set of mitigation recommendations uh, for our consideration. So what else can we do out there to enhance, uh, safety, uh, both pedestrian, but also the, the traveling, uh, public? So at this point, the post occupancy, uh, traffic study, uh, we have the scope of services has been completed. Uh, we're finalizing the contract with the CMR PC. And I believe it's their intention to begin that study, uh, in September. So a lot of work has been done. Uh, we will communicate to Amazon the costs and, uh, and, um, uh, again, through the collaborative process that we've used with Amazon, uh, they are going to, um, they've agreed to fund whatever the balance of the cost of that, uh, post occupancy traffic study would be. Next slide please. Um, in your packet is a, an update from Amazon. It's a letter dated August twenty-third today. Um, a few things that Amazon has done to increase, uh, compliance with preferred trucking routes is, uh, during the month of July. Uh, they hired a flagger for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, uh, at the, uh, exit to their facility. Uh, making sure that, uh, the vehicles, uh, were taking the correct, uh, turning motions, which would be right out of the driveway to get to Simarano Drive to exit, uh, access four ninety-five. In the letter, they also talk about, uh, what they've been doing to enhance their geo fencing GPS software uh, by identifying, uh, routes that are, are, are not allowed, uh, through their software. Um, not all of their drivers, uh, are using their GPS software and that has posed a, a, a problem for them. Um, because they don't have a hundred percent penetration to all their drivers, but approximately sixty percent of their drivers use their GPS software. Uh, and so those routes are very clear as, uh, as, uh, no goes for those folks. Um, but that's something that, uh, we continue to have conversations with Amazon regarding, uh, how can they enhance the effectiveness and the penetration of their geo fencing GPS software. There has been, uh, as the board knows, we have received, uh, and we've encouraged residents to provide us with, uh, photographs uh, and documentation of, uh, trucks that are not taking the preferred trucking routes. And, um, those, that information has been used, uh, going back to negotiating the mitigation, uh, that's necessary uh, to work with Amazon, uh, and to press them to institute uh, changes internally to their, uh, own system to make sure that they're able to comply with the, the turning restrictions. Um, but they've indicated that, uh, when, uh, when they observe, uh, as the, as the case, they had a flagger there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If somebody's not following that route, they get reported. It goes through their internal system. And the, uh, the violators are, uh, being dealt with internally by Amazon. And they've indicated, again, I'm not speaking for Amazon. These are excerpts from the letter. Um, that repeated violations result in removal from their, from their, uh, business model or their program. Uh, Amazon did indicate that, uh, with the implementation of all the things that we discussed tonight, uh, they've seen a major improvement. With, uh, with trucks taking the correct turns out of the facility. Their most recent, uh, their seven-day trend, uh, is approximately ninety-nine percent. Um, I think they will acknowledge that, uh, there is still, uh, an issue with trucks coming in from Route twenty onto Bartlett, uh, and that is something that they're aware of and we continue to work with them on. Um, but they are taking, uh, some very, uh, uh, considerable measures to, uh, to address these, uh, issues. Um, the, again, the post, the, the, the goal, uh, one of the goals of the post occupancy traffic study is to get a very clear, um, a picture of where the trucks are turning uh, and where they're going. Uh, and that would inform us on, uh, for additional actions on behalf of the town in terms of mitigation, but also in terms of what Amazon needs to do to get compliant with the, um, with the, uh, site plan approval and the direction of the truck traffic that we want to see. But, uh, but clearly through all of these efforts has been a, a tremendous improvement down there. As someone who lives in that neighborhood and is down there all the time, uh, even if you look out, uh, at truck traffic in the downtown, uh, the work we've done with not only Amazon, but also with FedEx and A D U Pile, it has been a very significant reduction in the amount of truck traffic. So is there still work to be done? Uh, yeah, there's still work to be done. I think a big piece of it is getting a handle through the post occupancy traffic study of, of finding out exactly where, uh, where the traffic and the truck traffic in particular is, uh, is moving, uh, how, how, what the level of that is and then, um, determining, uh, you know, next steps. Uh, but again, Amazon continues to, to work with us. Uh, I think they've made, uh, real genuine efforts. One of the things that we've heard in our repeated meetings with them is that, you know, it is a is a much more complicated problem. I think that we would, uh, like it to be. Uh, some business models like, uh, uh, Scott mentioned A D U Pile where it's a family business. They own and they, uh, the trucks and the drivers. Um, Amazon is a little bit different business model. That's posed some, uh, a little bit more struggles for them. Uh, but I think based on what you've seen and the work that's been done, uh, there's been significant amount of, of improvement and a tremendous amount of effort, uh, on the part of particularly DPW, but also, uh, police that have been out there uh, doing a significant amount of, um, a significant amount of, uh, traffic enforcement out there and speeding. One of the things Scott mentioned in the, uh, speed zone study, uh, sort of kind of got glossed over is that, um, based on that study, what we're, we're finding is that we don't really have a, a speeding problem. That doesn't mean there aren't people who speed. Um, but we don't have, um, unbalance is, uh, the speed isn't an issue out there. So, uh, we also have had, I spoke with the police chief earlier today. He's personally sat out there for hours and observed the traffic and the speeding and, uh, would concur that with the results of the safety zone study. That, um, you know, again, it's not, the speeding is not out of, uh, control down there. Um, there's always going to be somebody that speeds on a road, uh, but by and large, uh, the study shows that, you know, people are fairly compliant in terms of, um, what's going on there, uh, in terms of the posted, uh, speed limits. So those are, uh, that's a good comprehensive update. I certainly can answer any questions that the board may have. I do know the next item on the agenda is really where Scott's going to get in and have a, a discussion. I believe the chairman has requested to take public comment in terms of the, um, in terms of the traffic, um, safety zone, uh, piece of it. But we certainly can answer any questions the board may have with regard to the balance of information that was provided here this evening.
Uh, thank you very much, Scott. Thank you very much, John. I just want to thank everybody for all the work that's gone into this to this point. I know it's been a long-going process and, uh, there have been improvements. It's, it's not an easy situation and, uh, the important thing in most cases for us is to try to, uh, assemble, uh, a lot of objective data that characterizes the situation and then approach it and provide the appropriate mitigations or, or responses to that. So I appreciate the work that's been done, uh, to this point. One, um, one item that has been mentioned frequently in emails that we received, uh, are complaints about, um, uh, trucks turning in the wrong direction, coming out of the facilities and, uh, the lack, as they perceive it, of enforcement of the, uh, condition that was, uh, put in place when these, uh, operations were approved by the planning board. So, uh, can you comment on, um, I guess, the bylaw that's in place, uh, and the revision that was made to it? And, uh, some of the, uh, factors that go into, um, uh, to putting that into practice.
Sure, I'd, I'd be happy to address that. So let me just start with whenever you have an issue or a problem of any kind. You know, our goal is always, uh, compliance. That's what we're striving for. Um, uh, fine agent, fines and litigation is usually a last step when, uh, when relationships are broken down and there's, there's really no place else to go. Or if the, uh, individual or the company that you're dealing with is non-responsive and, uh, and isn't willing to address the problem. That, that, again, I'm not here to defend Amazon, but, but they have come to the table, uh, with all the things that we've, uh, just covered, including the mitigation, the willingness to do and to fund a post, uh, occupancy, uh, traffic study to get the actual information and the details of where they are. Um, they've also tried to do, um, again, according to them, to the best of their ability to address the, uh, the issues that have been, uh, raised to them. So we continue to work, uh, in a, in a collaborative, uh, approach through there. If the post occupancy uh, traffic study does reveal that there is some additional mitigation work that we might want to entertain, uh, out there. Um, you know, there is an opportunity to, again, go to Amazon and see if they're willing to partner with us on that. Uh, to date, they've been, uh, very o- open and willing to work with us to try to address, um, to address these, uh, concerns. But in terms of the fines themselves, uh, that, that, that basis is in the bylaw. And so, uh, it just, it's worth, uh, taking a couple of minutes to discuss. And I, and I did include in your packet a memo from, uh, town council, which again is on the website, uh, right now. So you can see it. Uh, and but in, in summary, the, the three hundred dollar, uh, zoning, uh, fine, basically that's included in our bylaws, not the one that we just, uh, modified and passed at town meeting in May of twenty twenty-one, but the one that's been on the books. Um, based on the way it was written, it does not allow for a non-criminal fine. So basically it is, uh, it's a criminal action. So you would take the individual to court as a criminal action. And, uh, and it's because it doesn't specify the exact amount of the fines. It's up to three hundred dollars. And this is very nuanced in terms of, uh, enforcement. And so, uh, the bylaw that actually went, uh, to town meeting to modify that, uh, really wasn't born out of Amazon or the issue and the concerns that we have with Amazon. It was, uh, it was through some other discussions about, uh, fines and enforcement. And this was identified, uh, by town council, something that he would recommend that we modify. So in order for us to use the non-criminal fine, uh, uh, disposition, that requires the bylaw to have a specific fine listed. And so if you look back, I believe it was article twenty-nine, if I'm not mistaken, the modifications that we worked with town council to approve it, and these came from our office, uh, this, this, uh, bylaw change. Um, it has the specific fines which would allow us to, uh, pursue, again, non-criminal, uh, fines. It's still, if somebody were to appeal, that you still wind up in district court, uh, and, uh, and depending on what the clerk magistrate, uh, decides, they may find the individuals responsible or, or, or not responsible. Um, but in terms of the criminal, uh, um, pursuit, we were advised by town council and he basically says as much in his, his memo that, that he would not advise using a criminal uh, process for something like a, uh, a, a truck, um, issue. That it's not likely to be successful and it's likely to be very, uh, very enforceable and very messy. Um, that's why we pursued the changes that we did at town meeting. Bylaw changes, it's like the Jake break, the compression break bylaw that I discussed earlier in the presentation. These are all approved by town meeting. Then they go to the Attorney General's Office and the Attorney General's Office then reviews and approves or rejects them. Our office of modification. But we wait until the Attorney General's Office approves them, then they become enforceable for us. So, you know, again, we have, um, been working collaboratively with all of the businesses down there. Much of the work that's been done hasn't been mandated or we have no legal authority to, to mandate. The goal is to solve the problem, to address the issues and the concerns that have been expressed. And as I said, we've made a tremendous amount of, of progress there. Um, at this point, as we await the Attorney General's, uh, approval for the modified ball, bylaw, the non-criminal disposition method. We are still working with Amazon and as I said, beginning, uh, in a, in a matter of, uh, a week or so, we're going to proceed with the post occupancy, um, uh, study. And that again is going to inform us in terms of what, if anything else, can or should be done down there. You know, at some point, uh, I would say when that is complete, we will kind of be at the stage of this is where we are. And if, uh, Amazon hasn't done anything or is unable to address that, that last, you know, piece or that small percentage, uh, for whatever reason, then, you know, enforcement is, is always an option. Uh, typically in these situations, you know, again, we're trying to get compliance here. We're trying to work with people and do what makes sense. You know, you can, you can enforce, uh, with fines and take people to court. Uh, but generally speaking, the collaborative relationship and the, the willingness to work with people, uh, gets impacted. And so, uh, we've done, as I said, a lot of great work, uh, up to this point. It's been collaborative. Uh, they've been responsive. Um, and, uh, and, you know, again, that post occupancy traffic study will get us basically the last piece of information, I think, that we would be looking at for what if anything else can be done down in, in that area. And if you're looking for Amazon to, to partner in any way, uh, with that. You know, we want to keep that line of communication open. Um, again, in terms of the turning, you know, by their accounts, uh, and, uh, what they've reported to you in the letter, ninety-nine percent. Um, at the other end, uh, you know, there is still, uh, some, some turning issues. We're looking at other, uh, you know, again, we're investigating, looking at some other options, but, but that's basically where we are at this point. So we're waiting, um, again, for Attorney General's approval. Uh, while we're doing that, we're continuing to work collaboratively with the facilities that are down there. And, um, and that's kind of where things, uh, stand at the moment. You know, again, we focus on compliance and, uh, and getting people to work with us. Um, you know, that's the, compliance is the goal. Uh, is that, but that has a, a stretch and a duration. And I think the post occupancy study and what comes out of that and where we are, uh, will have a clear picture of, again, where, where are the traffic, uh, where are the trucks coming from? Where are they going? Where where are the traffic, uh where are the trucks coming from, where are they going, what is the level? Um one of the things that is difficult uh down on Bartley Street is that um and again. The chief has spent time sitting down there is, you know, you have the town's single largest industrial zone at that end of Bartley. That also is contiguous and and moves right into one of Marlborough's largest industrial zones. And so, you know, we're putting the onus on the facilities that are in our town to uh to directionally go. Out to that Cedar Hill um exit onto four ninety-five. Uh Marlborough's trucks are going to still some to some extent, you know, come and use Bartley Street. Scott mentioned, you know, that Marlborough and Westboro both declined our request for a truck exclusion to send our truck traffic through their town. In all fairness, Northborough has rejected every request from neighboring communities to direct their truck traffic through our neighborhood. It shouldn't be uh a surprise that towns aren't interested unless there's a mutual benefit, a clear mutual benefit. Uh to do that and um uh those towns have determined that there isn't one. And therefore, they're they're not interested in in pursuing that with us. So again, we're left with the things that we've done, as I said, it's been a tremendous amount of work and a great amount of progress. Uh and uh the last piece is that post occupancy traffic study that will tell us. What if anything else uh there is to do and where if anything else there is to go.
Thank you, John. Um just one more question that I'd like to ask, um re- regarding the post occupancy study. Wh- what is the awareness on the part of the facilities as to exactly when the post occupancy study is being done? Because I would be concerned that they would be extra vigilant for that period, and then once it's completed. Uh perhaps relax, you know, whatever measures they might have been taking. Um so I just want to understand uh a little bit more about how that is conducted.
Scott, you wanna speak to that?
Certainly, so uh CMRPC will be contracted with the town, they'll be working um for us. Uh there'll be a project kickoff meeting, um we'll discuss how and when and where they they're gonna be taken there. Primarily the turning movement counts are the most um uh substantial uh a bit of data they're gonna collect. Um like I indicated earlier, a lot of the uh traffic counts that we got, they're gonna use as part of their post occupancy study. That's a great collection of data that they have on both sides of the facility and in the area. What tubes in the road doesn't give you is turning movements. You wanna be at a facility or at an intersection with a clicker in your hand and count how many vehicles are going where. Um and capture the class of the vehicles, uh that's the that's the primary goal of this. And uh we've identified intersections where we wanna do that. Uh Route twenty and um Bartley Street, um Lyman Street and Bartley Street. Uh three thirty, three fifty driveway and Bartley Street. Those are the focuses right now of where we wanna do turning movement counts. You know, there is no expectation that Amazon is gonna be involved in a conversation about when we're gonna be monitoring their driveway. Um at all, we did, I we did look through the cr- traffic counts um that were done in May and identified the highest concentration. Of tractor trailer vehicles that traveled Bartley Street between Cedar and Lyman. Um and convey that information to CMRPC to say that's this, this is a starting point on what times of the day and what. Days of the week, we want these turning movement counts to be taken. Um you know, the expectation is not that there's gonna be a DPW truck across the driveway with lights flashing and a and a young man and they're clicking away with his buttons. But then again, he's not gonna be hanging from a tree with uh with camouflage on either. But uh you know, there there's the the crash data we have, they're gonna certify the crash data we already got and the counts. The the primary goal that I wanna get the data, I wanna see is how many trucks are coming through from Marlborough. Um and how many trucks are coming in to Amazon from twenty. Um I know how many trucks came from twenty down Bartley Street. I don't know how many went into Amazon, how many kept on going, Fort Hayes Memorial. That's the information that I I that's the piece that we're that I'm missing as an engineer to do some firm analysis and find out what's going on there in a in a in a. A a busy window of traffic, so.
Got it. Thank you very much, appreciate that explanation. Uh Leslie.
Okay, I have a couple of questions so far. Uh the first one is um assuming that the Jake break bylaw is approved by the AG's office. What does that mean in terms of our town, and what do we do about that then? Does signage go up and if so, where?
So um there's, as you remember perhaps from the presentation, we can't put uh we can't put uh a Jake break prohibition on. Uh state roads or the you know, roads that we don't control, but the way it would work is uh the board would take, you know, either by by request. Uh of a of a street um uh or neighborhood, the board would take that up, staff would review it, uh we'd make a recommendation. Board approves it, uh and then it would be posted, and once it's posted, uh it would be enforceable uh at that point.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Uh my second question right now is, I think the one thing that stands out to me. And again, John and Scott, thank you very much for all this information, this is a ton of stuff and uh it's, you know, it was good. Lot to look through and and read and hear about, so thank you. Is the fact that there are a lot of third-party uh subcontractors that work for Amazon. How willing is Amazon to enforce slash force slash mandate? Those subcontractors to use the Amazon GPS, because to me, it's a little bit of a missing link in terms of those drivers. Seeing that geo fencing and and knowing that those left turns aren't supposed to be taken, obviously the signage is up and the signage is great. I've been up there several times and and sat there and looked at it, but as far as subcontractors go on their GPS. Um what are, what is Amazon willing to do, what can they do about that issue?
Sure, so um you know, we've had these conversations with them, and and I think um based on the letter you received, but also. Just observations down there, we're not seeing the left-hand turn out of the driveway, I think is a minimal issue. And that that's something that they can more easily uh keep tabs on and directly um follow up on. Uh it is the drivers coming potentially from, you know, out of state, coming the other way, not using their GPS. And their geo fencing software, I think that's the the crux of the um issue. And that's the the thing that we've addressed with them most firmly is that that that's what they need to address. You know, uh they're all fighting for drivers. You know, there's no drivers out there, if you talk to, I talked to A D U A pile uh and FedEx, uh everybody is desperate. For drivers, and so um you know, it's a it's a balancing act for them, they they need to. They need to um hold their dri- their drivers, you know, accountable, but um. But they're also trying to stay, you know, trying to stay uh operable as well, so that is the in 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 my opinion. I think that's the that's the piece of it, and Amazon has to find that that solution to that last piece of the puzzle, and if they don't. Then they're gonna ultimately find themselves uh in a situation where the the town will have no choice but to be just finding them if they're. If they're, if we catch their drivers down on, coming in on the end that they they shouldn't be. Um for them, you know, you can understand the the frustration for uh for them in that, you know, if. You know, they're held to a very high standard when other operators um in Northborough, but also Marlborough are not. But that's really neither here nor there, it is what it is, so they're gonna have to find a way to to comply with that.
Yeah, and I understand the balance, I was just looking at this particular phrasing that they used in their letter, which was Amazon does not force our third-party drivers. To use our GPS system, so I don't know if that does not want to force, can't force, doesn't wish to force, I I I'm not sure. You know, what their stance is on that, so that's my last question.
A lot of the independent drivers, they they all have to maintain this GPS system, it's also a logging system for how many hours they've driven, because they're mandated to rest. You know, a certain number of hours out of the day, they can only drive so long without taking a break. And so they have, the each of them has a system that does all that and is integrated with their GPS. And so as explained to me, there's a a hesitation, you know, for drivers not to wanna have two systems, they want one system. But uh again, that's that's their issue, they're gonna have to figure that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Kristen.
Hi, okay, thanks for this. Um I have a few questions for Scott to start with. Um so as far as the, you have the safety zone. Um situation set up, so uh it sort of ends after Hemlock, somewhere between Hemlock Drive and. Route twenty, I couldn't exactly tell where on the tiny map, but um. Wouldn't it be a little bit strange to have the speed limit go back up to thirty-five, so close to the stoplight? I don't know, I feel like on the other side of it, down by syrup Brook and Jenkins, makes sense to raise it to thirty-five, but. Um on that side, it just seemed like I just wanted to bring that up, like it it it's fairly close to a a red light there, so. Seems crazy to give people a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit when they're gonna have to slow down for a red light anyway, so. I don't know if that's something that you guys have a ton of control over, I don't know how that works, um I just thought I would bring that up. And I don't know, do you have an answer or?
Well, but if if you compare it to a school zone, this is very similar to school zone, we're doing everything we can not to call it a school zone, cause you can't. Cause it's a high school, but we have that in school zones all over the place, you know, you you, you know, we, you go around Proctor, you go, I mean, I live in Grafton. Um you know, you're right before traffic light and the school, and there's a school zone that ends, it's just, that's the distance.
No, yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask, um and so, okay. So you answered a lot of my questions, um the uh installation pending on the bike lanes, so. You mean painting the lines on the road, right, and narrowing the road?
Yeah, so the, when I met with um uh CMRPC to go over the scope of work for the post occupancy study. Um they had mentioned the walking audit, I wanted to get a little more understanding of what the walking audit uh may result in, and they said, well, there's a lot of different things that could come out of that. Um bike lanes, you know, uh shared use lanes, um you know, shoulder improvements, uh lane narrowing. And I, and one of the things that piqued my interest was the um the shared lane. Um you know, bike lane is a bike lane, you're not supposed to walk in a bike lane, bike lanes are for cyclists, you're not supposed to walk in it. Uh a shared lane could be for bike cyclists and pedestrians, um it's one of the things they look at for traffic calming. Uh it made sense to me after some discussions with school administration saying, well, you know, our cross-country team, they go from Algonquin to s- to the trails and. I said, well, if I can get that open in a in a compliant fashion, um and their recommendation is gonna be to do that, then I don't wanna paint bike lanes. And then, you know, nine months later, I have to repaint them to be shared lanes, um and at that point, if I can do that, it. And and serve more users, uh it it justifies a box widening expenditure by, you know, everybody in town. To 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 benefit more users, so I I thought it's better to put the pause button on. It, you know, it's not, it's not like I don't think a lot of people are gonna be cycling there over, you know, December, January, February, while we're considering what we're gonna do, so. Um I thought it made logical sense to wait to bring all the studies together.
Super, yeah, I love that.
And just just to be clear, there's this isn't a physical barrier here, it's just, it's.
Yeah, I understand.
On the on the roadway, so.
I, yep, I know what it is, okay, thank you. Um and then. Um Leslie brought up the Jake break law, and you you were talking about enforcement. Um it will be enforced if it's approved by the district attorney, but um and there would be signs on the local streets. But how do you enforce a law like that?
The same way you enforce any other moving violation, the police typically would be uh observing and uh. It's just like speeding or, you know, violating a one-way, so.
Ticketing.
It it would need to be, you know, observed, and you know, a- again, if it's a if it's a recurring issue, then we do enforcement out there and. We would uh and we would uh fine.
Okay, cool. And then um Scott, for um my last question for you. Since um you keep saying, and I understand that you can't, I've done some reading on this, you can't. Call it a school zone because it's a high school, um and a safety zone is a twenty-four seven thing. So why are you working so hard to make this certain hours of the day? Um or even just like seven AM to nine PM and just have it be a more. Uh lengthy period of time rather than having it kind of act like a school zone?
The implementate, the 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 traffic engineering study that was conducted uh was specific for dislocation. Um and identify what the at-risk users users are, their students, you know. These, the the traffic engineer is a is a is a civil engineer focused on transportation, his recommendations are clear. That the um time periods by which the the interface between adverse users and as standard users are are. Where and when the safety zone should be implemented, um not broad-based twenty-four seven, not. Nine PM on on Saturdays or six AM before school starts. Focus specifically in what what they did as part of the engineering study is to pull pieces of what you do in other studies, i.e. speed studies. Um as well as a school zone and applied it to this safety zone use, which is, I mean, the the guidelines clearly indicate. That uh uh limit only in effect during the days of the week and hours of the day when children are accessing the school grounds. That's a quote out of out of the all, out of the procedures for school zone um uh.
But this isn't a school zone, it's a safety zone.
I underst- I under- I understand.
Oh, I just, yeah, I just don't understand that logic, cause you you also did a traffic study that says there's. Eight hundred heavy commercial vehicles going down the street every day past the school and eighty of them are tractor trailers. Roughly on your chart, I just, I took the percentages and turned them into numbers, cause it's a roughly eight thousand vehicles a day.
Yeah, eight eight hundred would be, would be ten percent heavy commercial vehicles, yeah, not tractor trailers.
Right, I said that, eight hundred heavy commercial vehicles, eighty of which are tractor trailers, cause it was like one percent of track. Of them were tractor trailers, but one percent of eight thousand is still a lot, so honestly, I mean. It just seems to me like if it's a safety issue, we could consider. Playing it a little more conservatively than, there's there's definitely two ways to look at this. But the other thing is, there's a driving school right down the street, and if there are vulnerable drivers in the world, it's those people. That they're, and they go on weekends, they're there all all day. Um they're not twenty-four seven, not in the middle of the night, but the driving school people make me nervous. Um so I'm just trying to speak up for all the all the people. Who are affected by this, and also, um I know you talked to the administration, I assume you talked to the principal. But he's, this is his first year and last year with the pandemic, so. He might not be thinking of the kids who stay later like the music and the theater kids. Most of the sports kids are gone by six, but the music and the theater kids stay later on a pretty regular basis. So those are just some other concerns that I wanted to bring up to the um the board. So everybody kind of understands um some other points of view besides what's already been brought up to us. Um and then, John, I had a couple of questions for you. One of them was, how long have you understood how the zoning enforcement works? Like you had a really good answer for it tonight, did you just meet with the attorney recently to talk about that?
No, again, this was the the reason why the bylaw was proposed at town meeting. And uh was to to make sure that we had this noncriminal um noncriminal option for us. Again, we'd had this, started to have this conversation independent of Amazon. Um we were looking at that and had the conversation with town council, and it was recommended that we make the modifications at town meeting. That was the whole presentation, the point of why we were doing.
So I guess I'm just a little confused why people should take pictures and send them.
Well, because we were, because it's important, because we're, despite the fact that we were not going to take criminal action. Uh at that moment, it did allow us to have an ongoing dialogue with Amazon, Amazon followed up, every one of those complaints that we received. We followed up with Amazon, Amazon followed up with their drivers, and that was part of what informed uh and allowed us to keep this uh. This discussion going with them, got us the eighty thousand thousand mitigation, got us the post occupancy study. And a lot of the other compliance trying to to get there, um frankly, I did not tell Amazon. Well, they know now, they're watching the meeting, that we couldn't find. Um, frankly, I did not tell Amazon, well, they know now, they're watching the meeting, that we couldn't find them. I didn't share that with them. Um, but um, but it's, again, it's public information. It was discussed leading up to town meeting.
It was actually really helpful for you to get all those emails with the pictures of trucks from everybody who was sending them in then.
Absolutely, and that's why, but that's why we encouraged and we requested them, so to send them in.
Well, it is good.
And, you know, the, again, the, the. Some of. If there, uh, is a truck that is, is not compliant, that is helpful for us, so.
Yeah, okay. And then you said a minute ago, Amazon may be willing to partner with us. Were you? Maybe you don't want to get specific on that um right now, do you?
No.
Okay.
No, I thi- I think it's, what's, what's important for us is, what's important for us is to. Uh, let's get through this next stage where Amazon has agreed to partner with us and pay for the study.
Yeah.
And then kind of see where we are, right?
That's good, that's good. Okay, cool. I just, one more question. This is about a memo we got from the planning board. Um, it says, a little ways down, it said, the planning board. Was made aware that the Board of Selectmen has requested town council's opinion on whether three hundred Bartlett Street, and that's um FedEx. Is obligated to to adhere to the conditions of the common driveway special permit, which you've been basically talking about for a while now, you and Scott. So, um. I wasn't aware that the Board of Selectmen had requested that opinion.
I requested, I requested that opinion because the question came up from. John Wixton.
Okay, so, yeah, maybe.
The question was posed to us, so we, so I, I sought some clarification on that, and we haven't received that yet, and we do, we'll make, uh, we'll share that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just.
The, the question.
That was a good question, and.
Yeah, I guess the.
He didn't even tell me he asked you that, so I, I was just happy to see it. When I got the memo, but um.
Again, it's a, it's a technicality. There was, there was no from what in my meeting with the planner today and kind of looking at that. It, it would be a technicality, it was not the intent necessarily, but the question's asked, so.
Okay, well, I, yeah, just.
Kristen, could you please allow him to complete his statement before you interrupt? If you would.
I, I'm not interrupting, we're just having a conversation.
John was continuing to speak and, well. This is how we conduct a meeting, ask a question.
Okay, yeah, I just, I, I'm listening. Do you have anything else? Did you finish?
Just the point being that this is a, this is a, a technical question. It was not, i- if it was overtly the intention of the planning board in that decision to make it apply to FedEx.
Mm-hmm.
It, that doesn't exist anywhere. If it is a, but if it's a technicality, uh, then. You know, again, we're, we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it, it just. Well, let's wait and see what we have for an opinion, because if town council says it's not applicable, then. It ends. If they say it could, it is applicable, then we would have to. Uh, uh, figure out a path moving, moving forward, so.
No, well, I'm really glad you asked the question. I just. Was surprised at the wording in the memo is what I was trying to get at.
I don't know what the planning board is referring to. Um, so. I had the memo, but I don't know why they phrased it the way they did, so.
Uh, that's just, it's just. That's not important. Anyway, all right, so I got all my uh, my points out and my questions asked. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, Leslie. Uh, you're muted, Leslie.
Right about that. Um, Scott. Quick question. Um, I know a few years ago, and I don't know if this is still happening, but I would be on Lincoln Street after a school committee meeting and their. School safety lights would be still blinking even though it wasn't really applicable at that time. It'd be like, you know, ten, eleven PM. Kind of thing. They weren't supposed to be blinking at that time. Who operates those? How do those get? Turned on and off and, you know, if there are um our limitations on the safety zone. I just want to be sure that those aren't blinking when they're not supposed to and so forth.
I, I can answer that, Leslie. It, it's done through a contract. Uh, our office contracts with the folks that program it. What happens is, when you have power outages or somebody hits a pole or something like that, it throws it out of whack and they need to go back and. And reprogram it. So, yeah, on a, on occasion, they get out of sync when they get out of sync. Or they're not flashing when they're supposed to be, they need to be reprogrammed. Some of it's older technology too, so it's a very manual operation. Uh, we've replaced some of them with a little bit more uh, uh, high-tech um approaches. But uh, some of the old poles, and there was one in front of Peaslee that, you know, had to be replaced recently, so. Um. So that's how it gets in.
I did slow down though, just FYI, just in case somebody was.
We appreciate that.
Watching me. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, any other questions by other board members? Julian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, so I'm, I'm also concerned about the limited hours for this. Quote-unquote safety zone.
Julian, I, I, uh, because we have that as a separate agenda item, perhaps we could discuss that, uh. You're talking about the safety zone, right?
Yeah.
It's the next agenda item. We're going to specifically discuss that particular one, so. I'm just suggesting that we hold over any further comment or deliberation or discussion about that for that agenda item. It was initially presented as part of the entire package here. We're gonna take it up as a separate agenda item for action by the board tonight.
It was sep- if I may, it was separated out because the chairman asked for, it wanted it on to take public comment. On that item.
Okay.
I, and I, yeah, I don't mean to cut you off, I just was suggesting that we try to consolidate all the discussion about that for that, that uh other agenda item. Uh, anything else, Julian?
So what am I allowed to ask questions about now?
I was just pointing out that we're going to have an agenda item, the next agenda item, specifically about the safety zone.
Uh-huh.
And it would be more organized to conduct all of the board's questions and discussions about it under that agenda item. That's my suggestion.
I, I, I'm, I'm confused, so I'll pass and, and ask my questions later.
Uh, okay. If you have questions about anything other than the safety zone?
I actually have a question about the bicycle lane. Can I ask about that?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, the bicycle lane is going to. On the nor- north of the high school, it will end around Hemlock Street, around Hemlock?
No, no, the, 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 uh, through the chair, the, the two termini for the bicycle lane. Um, are Algonquin Regional High School and the um Borough's Loop Trail. Uh, bike lanes should stop at a location. Um, one where you can have a crosswalk and somebody can, uh, somebody can wa- get off their bicycle and cross. Or at a destination, the um Borough's Loop Trail, which is the trail that is just uh townside of Cedar Hill. Is one terminus, the other one is at Algonquin Regional High School. We don't have adequate pavement width. Um, through the Cedar Hill intersection and proceeding into Marlboro to accommodate the bike lane without a box widening. So the, the, the asphalt width is about a foot and a half too narrow on each side to have a compliant bike lane. And I would not want to have a shared bike lane in an industrial zone. Um, it, I don't believe it's an appropriate use, neither does our traffic engineer. Um, you see shared bike lanes in more um areas where you're, where you're slowing speeds or acclimated to having interfaces with different modes of transportation. Um, so in sort of, in order for the bike lane to extend all the way to the city. It would require some capital investment on widening the road about a foot and a half on each side.
Okay, um. Okay, so, so we're assuming that the bicyclists will head into the high school. All right, so, um. I, I, I was wondering about. Um, why we're not talking about the thirty-five miles per hour once you get out of the sa- out of the safety zone? Um. Well, it seems to me that it, when it's thirty-five, people are going forty. We've seen that in the study, right? And there's a pretty short stretch between the high school, uh, between the end of the safety zone to the light. Not only do you have the driver's school, but you also have Saint Bernadette's. Certain hours of the day, so. You know, I, I'm, this is a lot of material to, to comprehend, to study in a couple of days. And I, um, I just, in my, in my head, I think that going down to thirty or even twenty-five. Might be a safer way to. Have the traffic go from the safety zone to that light. So, you know, maybe, could you explain why? You know, for example, like Davis Street got twenty-five miles an hour, that whole stretch between Southwest Cut Off and Main Street. What? Would, would you consider? The, the idea of reducing the speed limit on that stretch?
So, traffic studies have indicated clearly that, um, just. For lack of better terms, arbitrarily posting speed limits lower than what the comfortable driver operates at. Does not reduce speed. People still drive the speed that they're comfortable driving. So if you post a road that people are comfortable driving forty miles an hour on, you just posted it thirty. The drivers are still gonna drive that fast typically, and that's not my opinion, that's based on uh, uh, traffic engineering analysis, and it's, it's documented. A lot. And the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit is in effect. When the, when the safety zone is not. It's not only, it's not as if when you come out of a twenty mile an hour safety zone or school zone. That you immediately throttle it up to thirty-five to, to hit the brakes to stop at the red light. I wouldn't think, I wouldn't do that. Um, the second question you had is regarding the driving school. That driving school is not the same um at-risk user interface that we have at a high school. When the high school isn't having arrival time and departure time. You have hundreds of kids coming and going. They don't have hundreds of cars there. The um. Um, the school, the Saint Bernadette School. Those are, are experienced drivers entering and exiting. They're not part of the at-risk drivers that the safeties, um, the speed study uh observed, so. It's quite a bit different from what's going on at the high school.
So, so, but, but to my question. What, how does, how does Davis Street get twenty-five miles an hour and that little stretch? It's just because that's what people feel comfortable at?
My, my guess is Davis Street had, is, 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 um, the speed limit on Davis Street was established based on the horizontal curvature. That's a, that's a windy road. Um, it's, that's what it is. I mean, it's a windy road. I don't know, I, I wasn't part of that. I didn't do a traffic analysis on it. Um, I've driven it several times. I certainly don't feel comfortable driving much o-. See if you're listening, much over twenty-five miles an hour. Um, because of how windy the road is. So. You know, there's a lot of studies out there that indicates arbitrarily posting speed limits lower than what the driver is comfortable driving. Does not alter driver, um, driver actions much.
But, but if it is posted less than thirty-five. The police can. Pull a driver over and say, we're, you're in, in an area where we don't want you going forty.
I mean, the, I'll, I'll, I'll quote out of the, out of the DOT um traffic study guidelines. Uh, new posted speed limits alone do not have a major effect on driving, on driver behavior. Or encourage drivers to comply with the speed limit. That's, that's a quote directly out of Mass DOT's um guidelines for establishing speed zones. That's not unique to Mass DOT either. They pull that out of the Federal Highway Administration's documentation.
And so are those the guidelines that, that still go by the eighty-five percent? So if eighty-five percent of the. Of the drivers are. Comfortable at forty, that, then it should be thirty-five to forty? Is, are those the guidelines?
Correct.
So, there's. There's this article that I pulled up, which was, um, MassDOT begins re-examining deadly speed limit policies. And it's about the um. The Massachusetts Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, where they are kind of debunking that whole system. Saying that typical driver behavior has also traditionally informed how traffic engineers design roadway projects. Um, but this approach relies on a flawed assumption that we can trust the majority of drivers to operate their vehicles safely and responsibly. So, I, there's, there's, is this study that's supposed to come out this year, um. Hopefully, I guess, you know, I guess they're still in listening sessions, changing how we decide on, on speed limits. Which makes. It, to me, it makes sense, but I think I've, I've used enough of my time outside of the safety zone topic, so. I'll allow another person to, yeah, ask the question.
Uh, I, I just want to, um, yeah, make mention, as uh Kristen had referred to, the board. Received a letter from the planning board. Um, the, the gist of this, and it's motivated by the circumstances on Bartlett Street, but. Uh, e- even more generally, it, it inquires. How the planning board can impose conditions and what expectation? Uh, or what confidence can they have that those conditions will be enforced by other? Town operations or town departments. I think that's. Uh, you know, a much broader concern and consideration than we're going to address tonight, but. Um, clearly, this particular issue, this directive to turn in a particular direction coming out of the facility. Illustrates the comp, you know, the complication here where uh you don't necessarily have, uh. Uh, you know, a lot of direct observation at the time it's occurring uh in order to enforce it. Um, it's different, very different from a condition, for example, where. Say a contractor is required to keep a lot of his materials uh indoors out of view. And begins leaving stacks or piles of some of those materials outside uh of the building. That's an easily observed and persistent condition. That, that, uh, you know, i- is more easily uh detected and enforced. Than a transient circumstance of one particular truck. In a, in a, you know, four-hour period, taking the wrong turn where every other truck is taking the correct turn in that period. So, uh, there is a complication. Uh, there is uh. Some more thought probably that needs to be given about some of the conditions that are imposed. Uh, to the extent, you know, how practical is it? To be able to enforce them? Given limited. Time, money, staffing, other resources. Uh, a lot of times, these conditions, uh, although they are, you know, in some sense intended to be enforceable. Are, are, are more often perhaps, you know, just a, uh, an understanding on the part of the, uh, the operator. That they need to conform to that as a condition of their, uh, their approval, of their application. Any case, I just wanted to. Uh. Just to make mention of that. Um, again, it's not something that bears upon uh. Uh, our specific discussions here tonight, but uh, um, it does have broader consequences and certainly, uh. The boards who impose conditions will need to give some consideration about. The practicality of being able to enforce those conditions, um. Uh, and the, you know, constraints on resources the town might have in order to do so. Uh, any other questions or comments about? This update of the traffic safety circumstance? Seeing none, um, we'll move on. It's past the hour of eight PM. And we have Scott Sharpentier, Public Works Director. Consideration of safety zone at regional high school. Entrance on Bartlett Street. Uh, we've kind of seen the presentations, Scott, I don't know if you want to call up the uh. Uh, the map, just to quickly go over it again, what's being proposed? Is any further discussion specific to that issue and?
You'd like me to do that as the chairman? I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, if you just want to just review the highlights, uh, Scott, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, while he's pulling that up, uh, I just want to make a, a point, something out that uh, i- it's explicit that a safety zone. Should not be implemented as a traffic controlling measure. It is not designed. People have this mis- uh, uh, perception that, um, that you lower the, the speed limit and suddenly things become uh safer. What we find is that, you know, drivers will typically drive the speed that uh is reasonable. Um, but the other issue uh that we wanted to do is, uh, you know, the police department is going to have to enforce whatever gets put into place here. And, um, which is why there are these guidelines for reasonableness in terms of what you do and how you do it and where you do it. Um, because there is going to be an, an, an enforcement element that is going to need to uh take place here. But safety zones explicitly are not traffic. Uh, calming, um, measures. They should not be implemented. They're implemented. They should not be implemented. They're implemented because you have a an at-risk population, and that's what the focus is for.
Alright, thank you, John. Uh, so Scott, if you could just uh, just walk us through quickly again the parameters of the proposed uh safety speed zone. Uh, I'll once again go through the board, ask if they have any questions or comments, and then we will also take public comment on this.
Alright, certainly, Mister Chairman. Uh, thank you, thank you, board members. Again, before you see the map of the uh proposed safety zone, so how we got to where we are today? We um had a traffic engineer conduct a uh traffic study specifically focused focused on a safety zone. Um, there are certain uh criteria that need to be included in a traffic study. Uh, those are as defined by MasDOT's procedures for establishing speed um speed zones. Those include uh speed limits as well as school zones, safety zones. The engineer did the uh the analysis when he crashes and speeds. Um, married together a piece of the school zone um. Paul a pro- a pro- a procedure, uh because we are considering the at-risk user being a a high school. It's not as if this at-risk user is, um, you know, two recreational facilities across the street from each other. And there's constant, you know, foot traffic going across. That's that's not the case here. It's very similar to what. Um, a traffic engineering study would evaluate for a a school zone. So, the uh, the at-risk users obviously are the high school. The focus is around the arrival and departure times. You know, school starts, uh, the new school start time is at eight o'clock. The new school release time is at two-thirty. Um, so the recommendations for the timeframe for the safety zone um are pa- are around those, the arrival and departure times. We did meet with the uh school administration to discuss um uh the limits, the, you know, the horizontal limits that you see here. As well as the um, uh, the timeframe. So the arrival time was was pretty easily established. Um, we looked at uh right around. Right around the uh uh school arrival time, and we discussed extending the uh departure time to include. Um, a lot of the 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 focus of the after-school sports. So the A D was included in this discussion as well as. Um, the uh uh administration staff at the at the at the school. So, the uh, the morning um recommendation was from um seven to eight-thirty. And the afternoon recommendation was uh two to six. The idea of six P M is to allow the athletics and after-school programs, the 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 majority of them. To to be completed. A couple of the topics that came up during uh the discussion specifically around the afternoon. Um, timeframe was the highest concentration of users. Um, as well as the uh uniqueness of the high school in that they have two exits and two entrances, which is. Somewhat unique to this high school. So again, those are the recommendations. Uh, we discussed a few things um earlier tonight about. You know, the safety zone extending further to capture a, uh, you know, the driving school. And again, the driving school does not have the concentration of of at-risk users that the high school does um by any stretch. And um, you know, the 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 private school there is is again, those are those are children in there. Uh, those are those are per- parent drivers, so they're not considered at-risk users. So that. That's pretty much it. I don't know, John, if you have anything to add, you were part of those conversations we had with administration?
No, just that the the stricts, um, the strict engineering study doesn't recommend going to six P M. You know, the the traffic engineering study originally, you know, they were looking at the arrival and departure times. Uh, again. We had conversations with the administration, the superintendent, the uh A D, then the the principal. Um, and uh, and the consensus was that that was um, that was something that we could support that was reasonable. You don't wanna get into a situation, it certainly doesn't warrant, you know, twenty-four hours a day or all day long. Um, uh, cause it's not addressing the issue that it's meant to address, and again, it does become an enforcement issue of of what's reasonable. Uh, so, uh, this is why you conduct these studies, this is why you have an engineering firm uh do the work that that's done here. So that it it takes some of the emotion out of it, and it's based on the data and the and the standard operating procedures for wh- how you do something like this, so. Um, again, it's a reasonable, I think it addresses the 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 issues of the uh at-risk drivers at the time when they're actually on the road. And um, again, based on a professional uh uh traffic study, it makes sense.
Uh, thank, thank you, John. So the traffic study recommendations on page nine indicate uh the recommended timeframe of seven A M to eight-thirty A M. And two P M to three-thirty P M, um, the latter of which was discussed to be extended with the town and school administration.
In six P M?
Yes, to six P M, correct.
Right, and and that's what we'd recommend to you um this evening. It's at two to six P M in the in the uh afternoon, evening, early evening.
Thank you. Uh, board members, uh, any further discussion or comment? I can't quite see everybody.
Want me to get rid of the sharing?
Yeah, I think everyone's clear on on the the uh dimensions, the geometry of it here. Uh, Kristen?
Hi, so, okay, um. Going back to who you talked to, Scott, you consulted the administration, well, obviously your traffic engineer. The administration meaning the principal?
The superintendent, the principal, and the A D.
And the athletic director.
And then whoever they spoke to, whoever they spoke to to get feedback from to come bring it back to us. I don't know who they spoke to. We spoke directly with the principal and the superintendent.
What I'm trying to bring up is the discussion point that. As far as we know, nobody talked to the Fine and Performing Arts Department. That's my my beef here. Those kids aren't being represented by this six o'clock time um ending. They, a lot of them do sports as well as music. A lot of kids in, they have an amazing music program program at Algonquin. Lot of the kids in the band also do sports. They're like the superstar busy kids at the school. And they leave, you know, they're practicing for concerts, they got all different kinds of jazz bands, they got choruses. They got all kinds of different things going on. All that stuff happens later. I mean, I don't have a kid doing those things, um. But I used to, so I know the timeframes that they work with and. Um, and then there's the theater kids too. They do, in a normal year, they do three theater performances a year. And there's a lot of evening rehearsals for that and then evening performances. So I'm just concerned that the six o'clock P M might not be late enough for the vulnerable drivers. Cause as John said, this isn't about a traffic calming measure. This is meant to focus on those drivers. And I just don't think you've captured the whole group of drivers. If you don't wanna deal with the seniors who are leaving the school during the day. Because they have senior privileges and they have a study hall and they drive to the coffee shop and then they come back to school. Like, I don't really know how many of those kids there are. Um, and if the administration didn't bring that up, they would obviously be the expert there. But I feel like the theater, the the artsy kids are getting overlooked here, and I'm not okay with that.
Again, the input was from the administration about what they thought was uh would would cover.
Yeah, and all those things got canceled last year and nobody's thinking about that right now. That's my concern. If it was a normal year. Say, I defer to them, but it's not.
No, they weren't, they weren't looking at this from a COVID standpoint. They were looking at this from a typical, a typical year standpoint. This was not saying COVID.
Through the, through through the chair, one of the, one of the topics of discussion that we had with the administration. Um, geared around extending the afternoon window was um concentration of departures. It wasn't, you know, um, when do athletics end? End at five-thirty, get everybody out of there at six. It was, it was the concentration, cause they, the, you know, the uh. Administrator's champion had mentioned that there are programs on the fields that go later, there are programs in the schools that go later. When does most of it end? Cause we talked about the percentages of participation and after-school programs. And the folk, the 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 goal and objective was to capture the the concentration of uh the highest users. Um, one of the topics that was brought up was staged departures, you know, later in the afternoon. Um, you know, i- i- if if track and field lasts out at one time, a football another time, the cross another time, is is that? Or um, um, you know, soccer another time, that that is not necessarily a concentration of departure. So, there was a lot of discussion outside of just, you know, when are kids leave the field? Um, it was trying to capture the greatest percentage window of 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 students leaving the, leaving the campus.
Okay, it just sounds a lot like you're talking about sports. But.
Well, I.
I said what I needed.
In addition to sports, you have any number of other clubs and stuff meeting after school um in that window, that two to six window. So, it isn't exclusively about sports. It's, as Scott said, it's about the volume and concentration of people in traffic at that time.
Actually, Jason, the way the clubs work is they work before the sports, because a lot of the kids who do clubs also do sports. So they have like a window between the end of school and before sports start, and that's when the clubs meet, and then the sports go. Just, just so you know, cause your kids aren't old enough to be in the high school yet, right? Someday.
Mine?
Yeah.
You're you're on the wrong end of me, Kristen.
My daughter just graduated, so I'm, I'm, this is what we do. My son played baseball, my daughter played volleyball, involved in all kinds of sports and activities. And they were generally done by six o'clock.
Yeah, my kids generally done by six o'clock too, but my daughters weren't done till nine a lot of nights. And they, you know, I I'm right near there, so I, you know, I'm not talking about myself. I'm just trying to speak up for people who. Who might not be represented in this conversation, but that's, you know, I can be done now. I'll stop.
Uh, yeah, and I would, I I guess I would just add, it it's, it's not about setting a time window that's gonna capture every single student. Uh, throughout the course of their day or their activities into the evening. It's about capturing reasonable time slots during the day. When you have the greatest volume of drivers uh exiting or entering at at within a certain window. Outside of those windows, the traffic is much lighter and you don't anticipate as much of an issue. Uh, Leslie, you have something?
Um, yeah, um, I I understand what Kristen's getting at, because there are so many organizations and groups and clubs and so forth. Um, my kid, kids did do the athletics and the and the drama and and all that kinda stuff. And I also have a front row seat to the high school, on my my back door faces the the rotunda and the music room. So, over the years, I had a chance and I would look out all the time. Um, to see cars and parking and watch when the kids were gonna come home and all that kinda stuff. One observation I would make is that when it comes to theater things, they're leaving kind of on a staggered basis. It's, it's not everybody leaving at the exact same moment and making a bullet out of the high school. It's kind of a staggered departure, number one. Number two. It's a multi-year activity kind of a thing, so the kids are not necessarily driving themselves yet. There are a lot of freshmen, sophomores, and some juniors who aren't driving yet, and their parents are dropping them off and picking them up. So, in a lot of these cases, it's not just kids who are driving. Their parents are driving them. Um, the theater things are, as Kristen mentioned, you know, three productions a year. Um, so you will have some evenings where you have the shows and you have a bunch of people who are leaving at one time, but it's really. In the grand scheme of things, not that many evenings of that. Um, so, again, I've observed traffic over the years and and what that entails and what that involves, and it's just. I would say, to be honest with you, that a lot of the productions really are the younger kids who aren't driving yet. And the parents are pulling in and they're waiting for their child to come out and then they leave with them, so. That's just what I've observed in terms of numbers and the kinda traffic patterns related to that department.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, other comments, questions? Julian?
So to the point of, you know, the six o'clock cutoff, six o'clock is sometimes just plain dark. Oftentimes dusk, and that's, I think that's another factor to consider when, okay, there may be less kids leaving after six o'clock. But it's, it's darker and and a little more hazardous for for new drivers. Um. And the other, uh, and and it it's difficult to, you know, to think this through. How many, how many kids really do take advantage of this open, is it open, is they called open campus? Where they're in and out during the day? Is, do, do we have a number on that? Or is it, you know, one an hour? Do we know any numbers? I guess. Because it's a significant number of of students who are in and out during the day. I think that's more support for a longer safety zone time. And I have a question, um, uh, page six of the report from the traffic engineer. The crash history. So. Uh, this was accident data from twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen. When did, didn't Amazon come in eighteen-nineteen? Anybody knows when Amazon came in? Should we just say twenty-nineteen?
I I don't, I don't recall.
Well, if no one agrees with me, sorry, John.
No, I'm sorry, what, I'm not quite sure what you're asking. When did Amazon open?
Yeah, when did they?
Within the last, within the last year or so.
Twenty-twenty, it looks like?
Yeah.
So the accident data, the crash history, that the traffic engineers, I guess they're using this information. To make a d- recommendation is from twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen. Um, and I'm. I'm concerned that that the numbers might be very different after, with with the addition of the Amazon trucks. And with the increase in e-commerce, e- e- even an increase in FedEx traffic, so. Um. That's, that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Uh, you're muted, Leslie.
I think I'm just gonna have to stay unmuted.
You did wanna take public comment on this, uh, Mister Chairman?
Sorry, yes, 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 I do.
That was your request.
Yes, it was. Uh, okay, um. For public comments, uh, we're taking public comment on this specific topic of a safety zone in the vicinity of the entrance to Algonquin Regional High School. While I understand that some people may have broader concerns about the entire Bartlett Street uh situation. This particular agenda item is not the uh, not the point to offer those other concerns. So with that, I will begin. Bringing my time, I just wanna mention, if you wanna make public comment, you can raise your hand through the Zoom application. Press a. Uh, star nine, uh, if you on a phone and want to raise your hand. Uh, we will be um. Accepting public comment. You'll have approximately three minutes uh to offer your point. So with that, I'll begin with Carrie Martnek. Hello, Carrie?
Hello, Carrie Martnek, sixteen Hemlock Drive. Um, just a couple of comments on the traffic, the safety area. Um, one is really just about sidewalks. I know it has a whole separate piece, but even when I see that crosswalk, which is great, we got. It's really a crosswalk to nowhere, and it would be great to start to think about some sort of planning for sidewalks over here. Even the sidewalk that goes along Bartlett Street is really in a, in disrepair to some extent. There are areas where you kinda have to go single file and suck in to get by.
Um, Carrie, if I could, um, I understand the broader concern about sidewalks or other improvements in this area. We have a very specific proposal here that we're taking input on, which is specifically the safety zone proposal. Uh, in the vicinity of the entrance of Algonquin Regional High School, extending seven hundred feet in each direction. Do you have anything specific about that proposal?
Yes, so I guess the crosswalk right outside the entrance is really a crosswalk to nowhere, so it'd be good to have sidewalks at least there. And then the other thing is just about extending the time. I know we're focused a lot on students, but when we consider vulnerable drivers. Um, you know, there's also that fifty-five plus complex over on Lyman, uh, Del Webb, I think that. That I assume at some point there'll be a lot of traffic coming down from that way where we have, we may have a lot of older drivers. And to some extent, I feel like a vulnerable driver on these roads, when you're, when you're coming up against those trucks, it can be um very jarring. Especially at nighttime, and to Julian's point about when it gets dark early, um, it's a tough road to drive, and I think that um. Um, it's a tough road to drive and I think that um, if there's any way we can extend that to the max, it may be helpful be beyond the high school drivers, um, just in that general, obviously you're focused on the high school, that general vicinity of seven hundred feet, I suppose. But um, if there's an option to expand that, um, I think it's worthwhile. But in any case, thanks for all the work on this so far. I think a lot of it looks great. I just wanted to make a couple of comments.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Uh, next up, I have John Wickstead, bringing you in, John.
Can you hear me?
Hello, John, yes, we can.
Hi, John.
I should request a name and address, please.
Sure, John Wickstead, two St. Brook Lane, um, specifically regarding the safety zone. You, you know, Mr. Kudair's point that this is not a traffic calming, uh, you know, situation is extremely well taken. You know, this is not going to calm down the traffic, this is about at-risk drivers. But I would also point out that this is also about risk mitigation. You know, as you all know, I've spent a lot of time looking at the traffic patterns over here. And, you know, we have, you know, by the data that was presented by Mr. Sharpentier's, you know, some eight hundred, you know, heavy commercial vehicles on that road every day and some eighty tractor trailer trucks. And I can tell you just from being a jogger on this road that currently the majority of the tractor trailer trucks are in the evenings. So it's generally, you know, after four P M. Or so that we see the majority of the tractor trailer trucks coming down the road. I'm not sure how this dovetails in with Amazon's patterns. There's a lot of other facilities besides Amazon, so we're not going to dogpile on Amazon. There's plenty of facilities on Lyman Street that also use heavy industrial vehicles. And a lot of those eighteen-wheelers, you know, when I follow them down the road are turning onto Lyman Street. So, you know, my point is just that if the highest concentration of the heavy vehicles is later in the evening, then the safety zone ought to focus later in the evening as well. You know, I don't think expanding this in the morning is particularly helpful. We don't see a lot of tractor trailer trucks in the morning. We see a lot of them in the evening, we see a lot of them at in the dark when that is the most dangerous time. So if we're considering expanding the time for the safety zone, we really should take into consideration when the vehicles are going by. And that tends to be highest in the evening, it tends to be the most dangerous in the dark. And I would advocate for expanding the time based less on the pattern of the of the kids coming in and out of school and more on the pattern of the risk. At this case, the risk is clearly highest in the evening, highest in the dark. And that's when really we need the safety zone the most. Again, thanks to the town for considering this and for the amount of effort and time that's been put into this. I think it's going to make Northborough safer. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, next up, I have Bernswig Family, bringing you in. I have to promote you to a panelist, um, you're using an older version of Zoom. Is that acceptable, chief? Yeah, okay. Hello?
Hi there, Michael Bernswig, uh, Ford Jenkins Drive, you can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, um, you know, very interesting. I think, you know, I was thinking on on the same uh, same line as Dr. Wickstead. I guess my, just first a quick question and then then a comment. What we're discussing tonight is, is it overall up to the board to? Obviously, there have been recommendations by the engineers and all the reports and everything. But is it up to the board to decide the time and and speed or or? Is that what the discussion is or?
Yes, the board has its discretion too.
Okay, um, you know, I guess my my overall thought is, I guess at the end of the day, uh, you know, I would have the same line of thought that the time is probably the most critical factor here because clearly, um, you know, vehicles traveling at night, even if it's just one student at eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night and vehicle can't see them. God forbid it was my my kid or your kid. Um, we would want to have the the appropriate time. So if there are, you know, kids coming and going, seven, eight, nine o'clock at night when it's darker for the bulk of the year, I think that's probably the biggest consideration. I think I understand about this, the speed, um, obviously is, you know, multiple points of of view and studies and all of that, you know, five miles an hour more or less. But I think the the whole idea and all the research and effort that's gone into this, I commend the board. Wonderful, um, but I I think really the biggest thing to my way of thinking would be the time. And unless there's any reason really not to extend the time, uh, I think I think it clearly is the point that should be considered tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernswig. Back to attendee. Uh, next up, I have Lisa Moselli. Bringing you in, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Moselli, thirteen Maple Street. Uh, thank you for going so late tonight. I know it's hard on everybody. Um, I I'm looking at the Modern Municipal Modernization Act and it says that legislation allows municipalities to create designated safety zones, which are specific roadways with a posted speed limit of twenty miles an hour. D O T. Create the following minimum criteria for the communities to create the zone. The street should be adjacent to a land use that's likely to attract vulnerable road users. And the safety zone should contain one or more areas that have potential conflicts between motor vehicles and vulnerable road users that warrant reduction in speed such as crosswalks, driveways or side streets. We talk about the trucks, the many, many trucks coming in, but there's nothing here that talks about ours that the safety zone should be in effect, we're recommending. And we have a twenty-four-seven operation that's out there in Amazon and um, FedEx, which seems to be just as important. And we have not yet gone through a holiday program where the fulfillment will be taking place. So we really haven't seen the amount of vehicles that may be coming and going. But we've forgotten about the people who work there at this facility or certainly just at Amazon, which is at least six hundred. And with the twenty-four-seven hours of use, I know just in my street, when they're, when they're coming back at eleven o'clock at night, they're not going thirty and forty mile, thirty and thirty-five miles an hour down my street. They're they're speeding home. And um, and I think that if this has been created for municipalities to care for these um, vulnerable areas, I don't think we should be looking at minimizing the amount of time that we put on this area, especially when it goes from there to Route twenty where the road narrows. And there's so much activity that's out there that we don't, none of us actually see all of the activity on a day-to-day basis. So I really do think that that's something else that has to be added to the mix of uh, voting to put a safety zone here and putting it for a longer period of time just because we have allowed uh, this development of um, uh, such size to go on for twenty-four-seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up, I have Janine Callahan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everybody, so um.
Janine, could you just state your uh?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I thought you'd all known me by now.
We do, it's for the viewing audience.
Janine Callahan, six St. Brook Lane.
Thank you.
So I am hoping that the board would decide to extend um, the safety zone time past six o'clock. And um, I think what stands out in my mind, um, having athletes at Algonquin is, um, you know, it's not just six o'clock athletes are out, it's the home football games. It's the home soccer games, it's the gymnastic meets, it's everything else that happens. And, you know, you talk about a home football game or homecoming or whatever you want it to be. And there's hundreds of kids going to football games and soccer games on any given Friday night or during the week and those hundred kids all piling out at the school at the same time. So I would love it if the board would um, agree to extending that time because six o'clock seems like a hard line, but I don't know how a school uh, uh, safety zone works, if there's a schedule. Um, is there a way to figure out a schedule for the high school and home games and maybe have those flashing lights on those particular nights? Um, flashing a little bit longer into the night, nine, ten o'clock, whenever the games are ending. I don't know, it's just a suggestion, um, and the traffic study, I don't know when it was done. I would assume during COVID, which obviously, you know, those numbers are are a bit off. We all know that, that people were not traveling down Bartlett Street like they will be once everything is opened back up again and school is back in session full swing. Um, so that's just my suggestion, um, and again, thank you, everybody, for all of the work. It's it's awesome and I think we're all on the right track and we're just trying to do what's right for the vulnerable people driving down this road in this little section. So, thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Uh, next up, I have Rachel Armstrong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, Rachel, please state your name and address.
Rachel Armstrong, ten Hemlock Drive. Um, first, I just wanted to thank um, Scott and the town administration for the traffic study. There was obviously a lot of work put into it. Um, and I did just want to reiterate what everyone else has said. This was a COVID year, um, in pre-COVID, we would see buses coming up and down that highway, eight, nine o'clock at night, kids are going to games in other towns. They might be traveling forty-five to fifty minutes to get home. They have to take the school bus home from those games, so then they're driving home then. Um, so I I don't know why you wouldn't extend it. Um, I think we haven't seen uh, what, you know, post-COVID will look like when um, the town, the high school is used as a central resource for the town where, you know, it's it's busy every single night, I'm there every night um, with my dog and there are cars in that parking lot all the time, um, because it's used as a center, central resource for the town. So um, it's also used during the weekends for me uh, rented out as, you know, uh, meets for um, gymnastics for other, for basketball meets. So I think it's it's a huge resource, not only for the town, um, but for the surrounding towns. And I I don't know why you wouldn't extend it past six and potentially to the weekends. The other thing is, obviously, you know, at night, not only is it dark, but the roads start to freeze then too. So you have much more uh, dangerous driving conditions for the population. So I I don't know why we wouldn't extend it, um, I certainly hope that you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. John Wickstead, I have you with a hand up, I'm going to lower your hand and then if you really did wish to speak a second time, uh, re-raise it. And I'm not seeing that hand re-raised. Very good, anyone else who would care to make a comment who hasn't spoken yet? And I do not see any other takers, uh, okay, thank you very much for your input. Uh, members of the board, uh, discussion, Leslie?
Yeah. I think that a lot of points have been made, I think that that are, I think there are a lot of good points right now that are being made. Uh, my kids did also do sports and I know that uh, you know, even the track buses would come back at nine and ten o'clock at night. I mean, I I do know that, again, I have a front row seat, so I see, I do see all that. Um, a couple of the people who called in mentioned um, extending. I didn't know, I'm not clear on what they meant, did they just mean something past six? Do they, were they actually hoping for twenty-four-seven type of thing? Is there a compromise situation where we go till nine? Um, and I guess my other question is, looking at it the other way, is there any good reason not to do the twenty-four-seven thing? What would be, what would be, what would be a reason why we really can't do that? If there is a reason we can't do that, because it seems, it seems like a simple thing to do, to have those, to have that safety zone there. So are there good reasons why we can?
Uh, John or Scott, would you care to respond?
Yeah, I'll I'll through through the chair, um, you know, again, the intent is to uh, address the the safety of the at-risk users. So, you know, twenty-four hours a day, I I I don't see at-risk users, you know, I don't know, ten, what, eleven P M. To five A M. I mean, I don't know if that's even where the window would fall, but um, you know, again, this is under the the jurisdiction of 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 the board and, you know, it's not going to be engraved and granted. Um, it's a simple app that we can change the time that the lights go blink blink if that needs to be done. Um, but again, this the 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 engineering study, the professional engineer who did it, myself, you know, we know the at-risk users are the students. The intent is to capture the concentration of students, not, um, you know, a light, a light user window. But, you know, arbitrarily setting a twenty mile an hour speed limit is not going to make people drive twenty miles an hour. It's 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 it just, it doesn't, they they drivers tend to do what they do, unfortunately.
Uh, again, if I if I made through the chair, you know, we talk about risk management, you know, if 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 you want everybody to be safe, the entire town should be twenty miles an hour in one direction. And and I mean, honestly, everybody wants every uh, their street at that, um, but they want to drive how they want to drive reasonably down the other streets, ultimately it does become an enforcement issue. You know, is there an expectation that people are going to drive twenty miles an hour in front of the high school for what purpose? You know, again, uh, my my street's around the corner, why is in my street twenty miles an hour? Where you get onto Route twenty, there's truck traffic and traffic there. It's about uh, risk management is about about right sizing, you know, same thing even in your personal life, you know, if everybody was, you you insure yourself to the hill, but you don't, you 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 try to make it based on some sort of reasonable uh, data analysis, some sort of reasonable uh, parameters that are consistent. Um, I'll tell you why the best D O T. Doesn't allow towns to set their own speed limits. Why it's based on a a speed study and it's the eighty-fifth percentile is because that's what's reasonable. And if left on their own, it, people would just, you know, cave to every every street wanting their street to be uh, you know, twenty miles an hour. And it becomes, it it's going to be an enforcement issue for the police department for sure. Because again, you have to ask yourself, is it reasonable that it's twenty miles an hour at two o'clock in the morning? Does that make, does that make sense? So it's about reasonableness, it's about standards and enforceability, um, that's why it's being recommended.
Thank you, John. Uh, Scott, I I did have a question just to follow up. The equipment that's being used for the flashing devices, how is that programmed or controlled as far as what times of day it's operating?
It's uh, programmed remotely through um, to an application, an app on your, on your, on your computer. Um, it does recognize daylight savings time, you set up your time zone, daylight savings. It manages itself automatically, these are solar, so loss of power on the grid doesn't impact it. Um, you know, the school zone signs of, you know, change, my my school in the Gratz, they've changed. So our, all our school zone times have to change, um, they're remote, um, it's a very relatively easy thing to change. It's not, it's not that complicated.
Okay, and that's for a kind of a standard schedule, if you will, like Monday through Friday, particular times of day.
Yep.
Perhaps different on the weekend or not operating like that on the weekend?
It would, it would not be activated on the weekend, it would be activated during during school days. Um, you can go to the extent where you program in um, vacation weeks, which is relatively easy here because most schools take the same weeks, um, you can program in holidays and obviously summer.
And and for something like the one-off events, right, the particular weekend you're having a gymnastics meet or a particular evening, you've got the soccer game, that takes some kind of intervention, if you will, to custom program it for that one instance?
That, there would be a logistic issue in that, um, this is you know, by the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administration, the Public Works Department. I I I don't know when they're doing a a gymnastics event at Algonquin Regional High School, I have no idea. Um, there'd have to be some mechanism for them to control town gear, the regional school, which I don't know. I don't know how that would, logistically, I don't know how that would work it. I don't, I'm not sure.
I just wanted to understand the complications of how it's set. I just wanted to understand the complications of how it's set for a particular time. Uh, thank you. Uh, Leslie?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I think I know what you're getting at, Jason. I, I think it'd be kind of interesting, you know, trying to make sure everybody has the calendar. And is able to go in there and maybe, maybe make changes on a customer.
I, I'm not sure I'd give that much latitude, but certainly uh, wondering what level of flexibility there is.
Right, right. Um, I guess my feeling is if, if, if we're going to be incorporating a safety zone there. While we have it there, would it be worth at least extending it to nine P M? Because, you know, at that point, you're, you are pretty much capturing buses coming back late from a meet. Uh, parents leaving, people leaving a show for the most part, um, you know, a music performance, jazz night. All those things, again, based on my observation over many years. It, I think going till nine would cover most of those situations. You would have a little bit of, you know, the occasional night when a bus comes back at ten. And you have parents waiting there and then they're leaving with their child. But I'm wondering whether it would be worth extending it till nine even. Would that be something we could do?
I'm sorry, Scott, did, yeah.
Just, 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 just a thought. I mean, we have, you know, um, Julian brought up a, a point about the traffic study indicating that the crash data was taken through D O T. And it's a bit of an older window. It's fourteen through eighteen, doesn't capture um the twenty-twenty occupation of the three thirty, three fifty Bartlett Street properties. Uh, we're gonna be doing another crash analysis as part of the post occupancy study. Um, that's gonna be the local level at the police department, so we'll gather some more updated crash information. Um, we have some, some solid speed information right now. You know, may, maybe an approach um would be to go with a, a, a six P M and reevaluate this after a ye, a, a non-covid year. With some solid additional data, we can do new traffic counts, you know, May next year with C M R P C, same exact location, same data. And if there's an i- indication that there's an issue and it needs to be extended, um, the data will bear that out. And, and at that point, maybe nine P M, maybe, I, I don't know what the, what it is. Maybe it's all day. Maybe it's, you know, six A M to, to nine P M. I, I don't know, but, you know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a civil engineer, but data-driven uh entity and that's just, that may be a, an approach. Just a suggestion.
Yep. Uh, Scott Rogers?
Yeah, Scott, you beat me to my question. So I was gonna ask exactly that for the planned analysis that's gonna be conducted. In, in the area with the, the turns and measurements, do you, are those planned locations? Would it give us that additional data that we could use to evaluate the timing around the school and, and the safety zone?
It, it will help. We will be able to compare the crash data that's in the speed study, um, which is an old window. To current crash data, which will capture everything that's at the police department as of, you know, accident reports up to September of twenty-twenty-one. Um, and we have current and accurate traffic data through the counts and we can gather that again. So, um, the turning movements would be a one-off. I would not expect us to do turning movements again in a year. Unless the decision by the board is that we wanna capture that information as well and have a, a full picture of sort of a then and now. Um, to see how our mitigation measures are, 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 are being, being adhered to and, and being respected, I guess.
Uh, yeah, what I was asking, if the, the turning movements that are planned for September. Would they give us any information that would lead to modifying the timing on the safety zone?
They likely won't because it's gonna be a very small captured information, but the post occupancy study, um, they're gonna go into more depth. On the traffic counts that were, that were obtained. So we got the traffic counts with the intent to, um, one captures a lot of data. In a, in a defined window of time. And two, to see if we can get truck exclusions on some additional roads, which that bore out to be the case, which is good. Um, you know, the turn, the, the, the post occupancy study will be able to analyze the, the information on the tractor trailers. What times are they typically um going? Where are they coming from with the turning movements? Um, there'll be a lot more uh, uh, analysis of that data. Um, cou- coupled with the, the turning movement. So will the turning movements help with our traffic safety study? No. Um, it'll help seeing where they're coming from. You know, if, if, you know, if we have eighty tractor trailers going up and down. Bartlett Street, forty in each direction, I, I don't know if thirty-five of those are coming from Marlboro. Or if thirty-five are coming from our properties in Northborough. This will, this will tell that, that story for us.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. So, a- and I'm of the same mind that if we can get some data to support a decision. You know, that's, that's how I'm gonna make my decisions, right, is based on actual data coming in. So, uh, as we get that through either planned opportunities. Um, or, you know, future opportunities or future actions that we plan, then, then I'll make the decision based on that. But right now, we have um a study and professional engineering advice. Around the timing adjusted by what we got from school administration. I'm not gonna second guess su- school administration at the, at the moment, but if we, as we learn more about the timing and adjust it further. Then make further adjustments.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Kristen?
So, the um, the eighty-five percent that John was talking about. The safety zone was created because that was, that turned out to be not really the best way to regulate speed limits in towns. That's why they created safety zones in the first place, to give towns the right to do this whole thing. Without even a traffic engineering study. So I applaud you, Scott, for, for getting that. Um, that extra step, but I'm, technically, we didn't need it. Technically, all we need to do is discuss as a board. So, keeping that in mind, it's, it's not as important to me. To ha- try and analyze how many children are coming and going. Driving themselves back and forth to various activities, including sports and theater and clubs. And whatever, football games. Um, that's not a data, that's not something you can really pin down with data. And the school administration is one opinion. Our opinion is really important too. That's why we are on the Board of Selectmen and that's why we're the ones who get to vote. It is our job to second guess everybody who gives us opinions. Because it's our job to discuss it, like we're doing right now. I think we're doing a great job at discussing this. And having a conversation about something and not just saying, well, we're gonna vote on that and do it exactly how it says in the motion that we already got. Because that was what the recommendation was. So, first of all, three cheers for all of us for sitting here and talking about this for so long. And second of all, we didn't ask Chief Lieber anything and he is the police chief. And I don't know, maybe since it's a traffic and safety issue, would the chief wanna weigh in? As I'm happy to listen to him if he is.
Sure, Chief, please.
The chair. Um, yes, thank you. I, I fear that a twenty-four seven safety zone is going to create a totally unrealistic. Traffic enforcement expectation on the police department. Um, the speed limit on Cell Street that we've called Clapham's Hill is twenty-five. Routinely, we stop cars at forty-eight miles an hour. If you put a safety zone there at twenty, we're still gonna be stopping cars at forty mi- forty-eight miles an hour. Um, the same situation holds true on many other streets in town. This is a unique street because it goes from a relatively uh narrow section down by Hemlock into an industrial road. Just past Jenkins. Um, and I have to just honestly say that if I were a police officer, which I am, but if I was one of my guys on the street. That do traffic enforcement and at ten o'clock at night, a car comes around the corner at twenty-eight miles an hour, it's not getting stopped. It's, it's unreasonable. It's completely unreasonable to do that. It's a waste of my office's time. It's a waste of enforcement. There's very little traffic. There's nothing coming out of the high school. It's just creating an unrealistic enforcement, the expectation. I have two police officers and a patrol sergeant working right now. And I just anticipate that every time we get a call, someone goes, but, you know, racing down Bartlett Street, we're gonna get a call. I have a hundred plus miles of other streets in town that we have to patrol. And as a matter of fact, most of them have far greater crash data and, and accidents on them than Bartlett Street. Um, and, you know, the speed limit going underneath the aqueduct is reduced down to twenty miles an hour, but we still have trucks once a week hitting the aqueduct. Signage doesn't really change anything. It just makes the enforcement a little bit easier. There are people that will, in fact, slow down, but I think realistically. If, if you expect even people that live in your neighborhood to drive twenty miles an hour from Route twenty down through the neighborhood, that's unreasonable. But you've got trucks and you've got commercial vehicles that don't drive that street every day that it will make an impact on. So, I guess the jury is out for me on what the time should be, but I, I am not. I, I mean, I want everybody in the sound to feel as safe as they can, but it has to be done reasonably. And uh, when my officers go out there and they, when, when I give them to direction to go down and do traffic enforcement. They need to feel somewhat good about what they're doing and not just being punitive to people that happen to be going through a neighborhood. That all of a sudden has a twenty mile an hour speed zone because it's, I, I guess it's unreasonable. Uh, if we did the study on, if this were Church Street, we have far more accidents. We have just as many trailer trucks. And if we made a speed zone, the entire length of Church Street, how many people do you think would be going twenty miles an hour? Zero. So, it's unrealistic. I'm all for it, uh, in the early morning. Uh, I, I do know that there's an open campus. Uh, and, you know, quite honestly, I wasn't thinking about. At first, I thought six o'clock seemed reasonable to me. Um, but then I don't know so much about uh, how. What's the influx of people leaving the school later on at night, even after some of the uh, after-school, the uh, events that you had mentioned, like theater and things like that? So, um, it's, that's my concern, is it's going to appear that the police department is gonna be ineffective. Because I don't have the staff to enforce it the way I think the neighborhood's gonna want it enforced. Uh, because everybody else wants the same level enforcement on their street in town all the time. It is the number one complaint and request for services I receive here every day. And I'm telling you, my offices, I, I, if they, I'm sure they feel like I'm hitting them with a hammer. Once a week, 'cause I send this, all the requests that we get, go to a sergeant that's in charge of our traffic enforcement. And he sends it out to the shifts and, and it, it goes out. It's just a matter of time. And again, the, the key here is let's be reasonable and let's get something that's in place that accomplishes what we wanna do, which is protecting the vulnerable population down there at this high school. But let's make sure we do it in a way that makes some sense. And when my guys go down there to enforce it, they feel good about enforcing. And that's my, that's my two cents on that. So, again, you don't want me weighing in on, it's never a good thing when you make the law enforcers. Be responsible for making the laws, okay?
Well, Jason, can I just add one thing to what you've given? A few other people have said, I honestly, this is gonna drive me crazy. I like to drive fast. I don't wanna slow down. I'm gonna be one of those people who really struggles with this. This is not like a. And besides, it ends at my house anyway, so it doesn't really affect me when I'm going the other way. But uh, yeah, it will drive me crazy when I do have to go that way. It will drive me crazy. I'm not looking forward to this at all. But I do feel like discussing it is a good idea, so.
Absolutely. And a decision, I mean, I'm all in favor of what you wanna vote on. Uh, uh, at least in the safety zone is, you get my vote, but I, it does, I, mine doesn't count.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, other comments, Leslie?
Yeah, um, okay. Interestingly, I guess I'm not as concerned about the enforcement aspect of this particular issue. I'm more looking at it as, oh, while we have a safety zone in place and if the lights are already blinking. Till six potentially, couldn't we just leave them blinking until nine because it still is, it's an alert? So that as kids are coming and going out of the high school and trucks are potentially coming down Bartlett. That there is some notification that this is an important spot, so slow down potentially. I know, again, it's not supposed to be used as a, you know, traffic mitigation, all kind of nice stop signs are not supposed to be viewed that way either, I know. That's come up in some past meetings. But while we have those blinking lights, can we put them to use by leaving them on? Let's say as a, in a compromised situation for three more hours to cover the majority of situations. Um, as an alert. Again, I'm not actually looking to have somebody there ticketing people. It's more that trucks will see the lights and think twice about it, about that particular area.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Julian, did you have your hand up?
I did, I did. So, so I think we know that um, after six o'clock. There's probably not as many students exiting the school as there is between two and six. But you have the two other factors, which is the light factor and the increased amount of trucks that have been observed. That, that in the evening hours, there are more trucks than in the afternoon. So those three things together make me agree with Leslie that extending the hours to nine o'clock. Is um, is prudent. Now, at, you know, Scott said we could, we could analyze this further and extend the hours later. I, I would rather do the reverse. I'd rather have it until nine o'clock and then cut back if it's, if it's ridic, you know, just not appropriate. Um, so that's, that's kind of where I stand, but the other very important thing I want to know is. What, whatever we decide tonight, that is subject to change, correct? If um, if it's not, it's not working or we get more data. I, I just don't want it to, I don't want this to be, you know, something that is not so. A situation that we can change as the, you know, as, as, as the situation changes.
I, I, I think the circumstance is we would like to put something in place for the start of the school year.
Mm-hmm.
That addresses at least the most important time slots or what we have recommendation as to the most important time slots. It's not a one-time decision cast in stone that cannot be modified in the future, given more input and more recent data. So, I think my greatest concern is a little bit less about. Um, the evening times, but more about uh arrival and departure times at the high school. By the time school starts. And if I understood you correctly, Scott, did you say this would be or could be in place for the start of the school year?
That's gonna be driven by uh equipment availability. So, you know, the school year starts next week.
Shortly, very shortly, yes.
And we're talking about adopting it tonight. Um, you know, a rush order on this equipment, I can get it in ten days.
Okay.
But no, no lights will be blinking until I have the equipment.
Right. Are, are we saying in the timeframe mid-September?
I would like to do it the week of Labor Day, yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, yes, Julian?
So, there's gonna be a week that school starts that the signs will not be up. Is there a way to put the portable signs up on the first day of school so, so people know right off that there's a safety zone there? I think it's really important, whatever we do that, however, whatever we have to do, whether it's those portable signs. That, that on the first day of school, people know what the safety zone is. Can we?
I would have to think about that because that's not a regulatory sign.
Certainly can put up a, a advisory sign, you know, uh, telling people to watch their speed. But that, that to Scott's point, it would be, would need to be a, a regulatory sign that meets the manual of uniform traffic control devices to, to be enforceable.
We could send out a notification through uh, uh, the school distribution in Northborough Town News. Uh, subject to whatever we decide tonight to at least. I mean, not that that's gonna have an effect, right, until the signs are up and running. Uh, but uh, uh, point taken. You, to install signs, you have to have compliant regulate, regulation signs, right?
Yep, and I, and I have to have signs.
Yeah, so, and we'll, again, it'll be expedited.
I'll do everything I can to get them as quickly as possible.
Sure, okay. Leslie?
I'd like to make an amended motion.
Uh, did we have an initial motion? Uh, I, I think we were interrupted because I had forgotten to take uh public input.
There's no motion on the floor yet.
There's no motion. There's no motion on the floor, so you can make whatever motion you like, Leslie.
Okay. Uh, I move the board vote to designate the Algonquin Regional High School entrance on Bartlett Street for approximately seven hundred feet in both directions as a twenty mile per hour safety speed zone Monday through Friday between the hours of seven AM to eight thirty AM and two PM to nine PM with a caveat that this be on our agenda in six months at a February meeting.
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded, the technical difference here is specifying an ending time of nine PM rather than six PM. And uh basically a requirement to review in six months, right, Leslie?
Yes, February, yeah.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers. Leslie, ten.
Aye.
And I, Jay Supro will vote aye as well, unanimous. So that will uh specify an ending time of nine PM rather than six PM. And we can revisit in six months to see uh what other new information or what effect we have uh have seen from it. Uh, understanding uh Police Chief Livers' concerns that uh um traffic enforcement uh expectation for with respect to that speed limit uh may or may not be met, right? Uh, okay, this brings us to reports.
Jason, can I add one, one little thing?
Sure, Kristen.
Um, I, I, I will tell the troops not to start calling you about every time someone speaks.
Uh, you, you, you don't have to worry about that because they, I'm sure several of them are downstairs, perhaps maybe watching this anyway, because I'm sure it was uh they're interested in it. But uh, we will enforce it as soon as signs go up. It's gotta be approved signage before we can take any kind of action, so. And once that takes place.
No, but we understand.
Initially, we will do, like we do with anything else, we give about a one-month period of uh heavier enforcement, but with verbal or written warnings, because there's a, there's a learning curve for people, especially the neighbors. That that are gonna have to, because nine times out of ten, when we do a speed limit change, the first people that we encounter are the neighbors. So, um, yeah, yeah, I, I think that these signs will have a much desired effect, especially on professional truck drivers with the CDL license fees, you know, two motor vehicle violations per calendar year. And uh they can have their uh commercial driver's license suspended or revoked. So I think those sort of regulatory signs will have a much greater impact on professional drivers, like tractor-trailer drivers versus the average citizen. So I, I'm hoping that's the case.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, reports, Kristen?
Me again, okay. So, um, I missed the last council on aging meeting because we had executive session that evening at the same time. But um I'll give my report, my, uh, sorry, my update, my next report, I promise. Um, the regional school committee, um, as Kristen said, canceled their meeting for tonight, but I got an email saying that the superintendent is going to share the district's twenty twenty-one slash twenty-two um required health and safety protocols with families on Friday, August twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, so we're. Oh, wait, that was last Friday. Okay, forget, sorry. I must have copied an old email. I was thinking next Friday. Anyway, we are getting more up information later this week. Um, the Solar Jazz Festival um looked like it was gonna be really cool last Sunday. And then Henri decided to visit, so it's rescheduled for September nineteenth. In the continued interest on of traffic and safety, a resident on Whitney Street would like to know, since there are tractor-trailers going over the railroad bridge near Coolidge Street and the weight limit is posted to be a six-ton limit, is this safe? And are they allowed to go over that bridge? I don't know if, if uh we answer that now or what? What should I do? Should I just keep going?
Just, just state if it's posted and someone's violating it, the interest note, it's like saying if the speed limit is posted for fifty miles an hour and they're driving seventy, is that okay?
Well, the question was about the weight limit, like.
The weight limit was established up through the chair, I'm sorry, the weight limit was established by Mass DOT after a bridge inspection. So no, that, that truck should not be going over that.
So they should report that if they see it.
And is that dangerous to the bridge? Is that why there's a weight limit?
To go over a bridge with an overweight vehicle, it is dangerous.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I'm glad she brought that up. Okay. And then um, thank you, everyone who's been calling and writing in. I appreciate it. Running the town is very much a team effort. And this evening, I would like to close, close with a Shakespeare quote. What is the city but the people? That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Kristen. Uh, Julianne Hirsch.
Good quote. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll, I'll be as fast as I can. So the first thing I'd like to do is thank the garden club for all of their work through the summer, providing us with the flower beds near the Old Town Hall, Ellsworth McAfee and by the fire station. And I'm bringing this up now because this, um, I think it was August fourteenth, the garden club and two Girl Scout troops. I want to mention their, their troop numbers, one-one-one-zero-six and six-four-seven-eight-zero, along with many parents and a sibling, at least one sibling that I saw, did a lot of work at the police station. It was a pretty hot day, but it um, it was also a lot of fun. And thank you to all of those who participated. And I'm gonna thin my list and go right for what I think, what I really want to concentrate on. And that is, again, I am going to ask that we please get information and a report on the COVID relief money, on the ARPA funds that should be coming our way. From what I've read, some of the money has to be used by the end of the calendar year, so the sooner the better. And um, I'll just ask it again. I think it's important that we have a discussion on how that money's gonna be used. It's a lot of money. That's it for me. Thank you.
Very good, Julianne. Thank you. Uh, Scott Rogers.
Uh, yes, thanks. Uh, so Chief Parenti, thanks for the monthly report. Uh, and just a quick congratulations to Morgan Doyle on his graduation from the Fire Academy and Pat McManus on his upcoming promotion to fire captain. Uh, Chief, if, if you have a moment, um, just looking at the section of the report that has to do with uh overtime shift coverage, are there certain, is there a certain number threshold that you look at that as we approach it, it's uh an indicator of needing additional staff?
Our, our daily staffing, uh, based on the study that was conducted before I, I came here, I would determine that the minimum staff that we need daily is five. And that's what we maintain, five.
And, and in between studies like that, it would, overtime shift coverage even be an indicator that would be a factor to, to look at the additional needs?
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Scott, you froze there and I didn't hear what you, what you said.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So in between when those sorts of studies can be done, is overtime shift coverage even a valuable indicator of additional needs?
Uh, the, the problem with overtime shift coverage is it's, it's very uh dependent on getting injured, people being sick, uh, leaving. So I, or, or promotions coming up by open, and that's why we've had some issues lately. And issues, but that's why, that's why our numbers have been a little bit higher. We've had some people relocate. We had a gentleman go to Marlboro. We had Captain uh go to Devon, so now I have all these shifts I need to fill. Oh, it's, it's not necessarily a, a great marker of, of uh, of our current staffing of what we need.
Okay, great. I just wanted to have an idea of how.
That's a fair question.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. I did participate last month in the Municipal Association Leadership Conference. They had a session on uh public meetings and um how to approaches for hybrid use. So when it's time for us to discuss kind of our, our going forward after April and next year and conducting uh public meetings and, and recording and, and broadcasting, uh, there were some good examples from those other communities on ways that they've approached that. So it's a resource for us when it's uh time to talk about that. Uh, and then finally, a lot of discussions coming from Open Space Conservation Commission and, and Planning Board on the properties that are uh coming out of Chapter sixty-one. I think that's gonna be an agenda item for us next uh meeting for uh the Whitney Street properties. Would that be the case?
Uh, it'll be at an upcoming meeting, yes. Probably, it'll be at one of your meetings in September, yeah.
Okay, great. So that's, you know, in terms of participation in those um commissions and committees uh that took a, a significant amount of time and, and just good discussion on those items that we'll, we'll have before us soon. Uh, in the interest of time, I'll leave it right there. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Scott. Leslie?
Okay, I'll, I'll try to make this quick. Uh, there was something on social media back in July about one of the residents called our DPW department the best-in-state after the July twenty-seventh cleanup, exactly. It was very impressive, I thought. This is a, a woman who writes a lot about different town issues. She also, I think, is the same person who was very happy about the crosswalk being installed on Hudson Street. Um, so she, you know, she notices a lot of things. She sees a lot of things going on and is very astute. So I'm pretty sure it was her that made that comment. I thought that was great. Um, also, I think it's been resolved now to my knowledge, but residents were concerned about the inability to buy trash bags easily. And from my understanding and talking to Fred Litchfield, uh, it wasn't a production issue as much as it was a shipment issue. But he was good about telling everyone and telling me and sending out um just different information to people that um they could come into Town Hall and buy trash bags in his office um using cash or check. And uh also the town clerk's office, who also accepts a credit card, but with the service fee attached to it. So, and Fred said there are plenty of bags in Town Hall. So if people do have issues, please feel free to go to Town Hall during Town Hall hours. Um, I did see that there was a mark, I don't know his last name, of Boy Scout Troop one oh one, uh whose Eagle project it was to replace two bridges on Stirbrook Trail. And I have not walked on that trail since he did that, but um there were some pictures that I saw that were unbelievable. So sorely needed, and he did a great job. And I think that's a great Eagle Scout project, that, that kind of enhancement to the things that we have in town. So very, very wonderful project. Uh, wanted to mention again, the uh clothing recycling bins that are at each of the schools. Um, those are great. They're very convenient. They're well situated. And they provide revenue for the PTOs at those schools. Um, in July, I attended a CMRPC webinar uh having to do with distribution facilities. Uh, really more than anything, it was a discussion really by different people who experienced the issue and kind of some things that they were trying to resolve, uh, to help resolve some of the concerns they had. I, I didn't walk away with the um definite list of things that we could do necessarily. To me, it was more of a sharing session. It was, it was just interesting to hear the thoughts and different things going on. Thank you, everyone who contributes to the Northborough Food Pantry. And I also want to, my final note is to congratulate Chief Parenti for doing a wonderful job on television uh the other day. Uh, and he was masked up, which I thought was wonderful, um, having to do with the evacuation at the Sudbury um senior living uh place, right, senior living.
Yeah, that, that wasn't my choice. I walked in and they said, you're PIO, and I said, oh, okay.
Oh, he did a great job. A lot of people noticed. I tried to, I got up, I tried to take a, a quick picture and send it to you, but it didn't turn out too well. But in, in talking uh to you ahead of the meeting, it sounded like it was a lot of work, about eighty residents of that facility and having to put them in two different locations. And some people are cognizant of what was going on somewhere. It's a lot of work, so thank you very much for that. That is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Um, I'll try to be brief as well. Uh, I attended the CMRPC online uh uh presentation um about the distribution facilities that Leslie mentioned. I would agree, it was more a kind of a sharing of experiences rather than solutions um to problems. Uh, I also attended the MSA webinar on uh hybrid meetings that Scott mentioned. Franklin and Stowe were the two uh uh samples, examples presented for what they had done to support hybrid meetings. Franklin's uh meeting room is spectacular and Stowe, Stowe's tiny meeting room is probably more similar to us than uh than Franklin is. So uh, there's work to do uh there. Uh, congratulations uh to former Northborough Fire Department Captain Jamie Destel, who uh has stepped into the deputy chief position in the town of Berlin, I believe. Northborough's loss is Berlin's gain.
Yeah, he's actually, he's actually in Devon.
Oh, my mistake, okay. Uh, just congratulate him on a, on a well-deserved uh position. Also like to congratulate our former colleague on the Board of Selectmen, Dawn Rand, who uh was selected as this year's Apple Fest Grand Marshal. Um, well-deserved tribute after her many years of service uh on this board and the Appropriations Committee and uh, and any other uh initiatives that she's taken part of in the town. Former Police Chief Kenneth Hutchins, who uh passed away this past uh summer, earlier this summer, will also be honored uh as kind of an honorary grand marshal. And finally, uh, just want to make people aware, there is a Purple Heart Sign Dedication Ceremony that will take place on Tuesday, August thirty-first. That's next week, Tuesday at eleven AM at Ellsworth McAfee Park. This is the unveiling and dedication of the official Purple Heart Signs uh at various points in the town. The signs designate Northborough as a Purple Heart Town and recognize the sacrifice of those who are Purple Hearts recipients and their families. This uh is, uh, Purple Heart Communities are designated by the National Military Order of the Purple Heart. The public is invited to attend the short dedication ceremony, which will include the playing of the National Anthem and comments from Purple Heart recipients. So once again, that's next week, Tuesday, August thirty-first, eleven AM at Ellsworth McAfee Park. And that concludes my report. John, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. We will proceed to public comment. I will ask uh Reese, well, I will ask respectfully, uh, we've had a lot of discussion about traffic and safety on Bartlett Street this evening. If you have something other than that that you'd like to comment on, I would prefer to take that first. And so I'm going to lower hands. And if you have something other than traffic safety that you wish to comment on, thank you. Laura Zaitin.
Hi, thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Laura Zaitin. I live at seventeen Franklin Circle. I just wanted to follow up on a letter I had shared with you regarding staff turnover earlier this week. If you could put an agenda item in the future, I was really disappointed to see that Liz Tretiak is leaving the Senior Center. If there's anything that we can do to really retain our staff, I'd like that to be something that is looked at in the future. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Um, I think that the departure of some staff members have been for a variety of reasons. And it isn't really about retention, it's about competition from other towns and communities. And it's about just personal circumstances, uh, what fits right for them, particularly after a year of going through the COVID situation. I don't anticipate putting an agenda item uh to discuss that particular uh uh topic. John, do you have any comments you'd like to offer on that at this time?
No, I, I recently appeared before the uh Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And we spent a great deal of time talking about that very issue. Uh, labor market is tight, very tight for municipal officials. And some positions are very difficult to recruit for. But um this past year has been tough on everybody and um it's just, it's just a very tough market right now. Not too many people want to do this job uh or work in public sector. The, a lot of front-facing, um, and I think a lot of the uh even department head-level positions that aren't, normally aren't front-facing are finding themselves on social media and kind of get knocked around a little bit. I think it does take its toll. Um, that's certainly a factor. But as Jason said, people leave for a variety of reasons. Liz left for, for personal reasons, so.
Thank you, John. Uh, Lisa Moselli? Hello, Lisa? You're muted, Lisa.
I see that. Uh, Lisa Moselli, thirteen Maple Street.
Lisa Moselli, thirteen Maple Street. I know it's late. I will also be brief. Have a few questions. About town, questions on landscaping. It seems a little odd that the Vietnam Memorial and the police station have seemed to be clipped down to nothing. There's nothing at the at the memorial and the police station is all its main old plantings removed. And I don't know, was there something special? Was there a fungus? There was something happened to the plantings to take them away? That I just found it very curious to find that both of these were just about just cut right down to the ground. Second remark was questioning about pavement markings that may be happening for the rest of, I guess, September. I know when school starts, they usually paint the yield and the crosswalk and all of that. And and now that we have the RRF fees in different areas, are we going to make some special pavement markings to go along with them where we fill stripes inside and make some a little bit more attention? Because on the really flat roads, you still don't really notice that that this signage is up. And my third remark is I heard with great excitement that that will be pursuing a truck exclusion on the other side of Maple Street along with Ridge. And I'm hoping that's that's true and it will happen. And I'm very happy to hear it. And thank you all for spending such a long time tonight. I very much appreciate all your time and efforts.
Thank you, Lisa.
Ken Scott through the chair just to address those so we don't have to circle back on those.
Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be brief. We had had some some concerns expressed with by members of Legion and other veterans about the landscape, specifically around the three one memorial, the flagstones that started to move. There were some tripping hazards there, and a lot of the vegetation was overgrown and it was taking over some of the signs there that that represent some of our some of our veterans. So we met with the local landscaper. We're clearing the slate, so to speak, and we're going to make it accessible, safer for our residents and veterans to access that memorial. Police Station, Julian Hirsch spoke earlier about the police station plantings. Our next goal, once we hit the growing season, is to get the beds cut in and grass established at the police station, similar to what we did in front of Town Hall last year. Pavement markings, we're not changing the process or procedures for our crosswalks. There's a substantial shortage of pavement marking paint, which is reflectorized. Our contractor can't get any white pavement mark paint for some reason. It's and that's industry wide. That is not just our vendor. But we will be restriping as we do every year. The Maple Street Truck Exclusion will be at the discretion of Mast D O T. Again, that though heavy equipment vehicles, the heavy commercial vehicles only met four point nine percent. So it's not quite at the threshold, but we're hoping Mast D O T understands the the logical approach to having that exclusion.
Thank you very much, Scott, for the clarifications. Carrie Martinak. Hello, Carrie.
Hello, Carrie Martinak, sixteen Hemlock Drive. I wanted to just make a quick comment about sidewalks beyond Bartlett Street. I think I've noticed in the paper that there seems to be number of grants that have been awarded in the towns around us, whether it's complete streets or shared streets, or even most notable was a recent mention of eight million dollar funding that was received for Route twenty improvements that Shrewsbury has taken advantage of. And it would be really great to understand what's our plan for sidewalks. As you know, I'm a member of the Planning Board, and even as a member of the Planning Board, I'm not clear on our plan. And at some point, it would be nice to, I know that, you know, there's capital planning and all of that, and I know their sidewalks are expensive, and we have a lot of different roads to pave, and there's a priority and all of that. But it would be, it would be really nice to understand that the what's the big vision for sidewalks in town. I think it'd do a lot to improve, especially downtown, obviously. Other areas as well, but especially downtown. So if there's anything along the way that we could actually get a sense of what that plan is, and if there are grant opportunities for us, I think that would be helpful for people to understand. Anyway, thanks for the late night. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carrie. Laura Zeitin, I have you with a hand up. I'm going to lower your hand and see if you raise it again, if you really intended to speak a second time. That's a yes. Bring you in, Laura.
Yeah. So I appreciate being brought back on, and I appreciate the feedback, and I totally understand that COVID has been an unusual year. But if you refer back to the letter that I sent, our staffing turnover for the last six years has been high, and all I am asking is that we take a look at it. I listened to the Personnel Review of the Director of Cable, and it's been, I think, twenty years since that's been evaluated. And I just want to make sure that we're doing our best for our town staff. So all I'm asking is that it's put on the agenda and it's looked at for the well being of everybody, so we don't have to worry about hiring and retraining, which is a very time consuming and intensive process for everybody. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just you may not be aware, we have a we have a review that's going on right now, a full class comp study that's just about ready to get wrapped up this fall. That is looking at compensation, job descriptions, and competitiveness in terms of wages and benefits. So that that is already taking place and and will get wrapped up this fall.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment. New business. First item, interview Subcommittee, recommendations for appointments to the Cultural Council, Board of Library Trustees, Council on Aging, Historic District Commission, and the Open Space Committee. Do I have several motions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. First off, I move the board vote to appoint Mary Crowley to the Board of Library Trustees for a partial three year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
We get to discuss this at all, or we're just because there were actually three people for that spot. I know it's late, but I just wanted to add that
Sure.
Vikram Verma has been, I just want this on the record because Mary, I watched the, I watched the video on YouTube. Mary obviously knows her stuff about libraries and she's great. And I'm, you know, I understand why you recommended her. But Vikram has been a very earnest guy. He's been volunteering for things. He ran for the Board of Selectmen. I just, I would like to throw out there, I I hope we see him on your recommended list soon. And maybe this wasn't the perfect spot for him, but let's encourage him to, if anybody's friends with him or if he watches this, to put his hat in the ring for something else, because I would love to have him on board. Okay?
Thank you, Krista.
Okay, so yes, I.
Julian.
Yeah, I remember when we started this kind of new process. Were, are we keeping a list of people who you know, who volunteered, but but they might not be the right fit at the time? And are we reaching out to them when when there are openings?
Yes, we do. We do that. We do that during the interviews themselves, encourage everyone to, if they aren't selected, to continue to apply for those other positions.
But are you keeping a list of people who would like to be on a list and notified, for example, when there's a position open?
And we notify almost every meeting. It's one of my reports. I did not do it this this evening. That for folks that are interested in boards and committees, continue to apply, and we're getting good applications in. And those are coming in. And and Kristin, yeah, we're going to see Vikram again in just a little bit. We'll be interviewing for and for another position.
Great, thank you. Yeah. And and if we had somewhere like a a comprehensive list on the website or something of what's open, I guess it would have to change.
That's under the Boards and Committees section on the website. Terms, yes.
All right, I'll have to look for that. Okay, thank you so much.
So for the motion that was offered, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Janine Vitali to the Cultural Council for a three year term to expire on August thirty first, twenty twenty four, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Do I have yet another motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve Teresa Lee to the Council on Aging for a partial two year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty three, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Scott Rogers, do I have a fourth motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve Elizabeth Nasser to the Council on Aging for a partial three year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. How about a fifth motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Amanda De Rocher-Milette as an alternate member on the Historic District Commission for a partial three year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. And your final motion of the evening, Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, last but not least, I move the board vote to appoint William Pierce to the Open Space Committee for a partial three year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. Any discussion? Leslie.
Yes, I just wanted to thank everybody who who interviewed with us. It's it's a lot of interviews. We've gone through some periods where we, you know, there have been night after night of interviews, and then there's a gap. And, you know, this has been a lot of interviews, been a lot of great people, and it's always hard picking someone over someone else. It's very difficult. And it's also difficult discussing in an open session. I think it's good, and I understand why we do it, but it's it's difficult because you always want to appreciate people who want to volunteer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other comment?
Yeah, I I just want to say I watched a good amount of the interviews, and I was really impressed with a lot of the candidates, especially Liz Nasser. I had no idea how what she does for a job and how awesome it's going to be to have someone like that on the Council of Aging. And Teresa Lee is a fundraising expert, so I know the, hopefully she'll be able to help them with that expertise too. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other comment? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, reappointment of Lori Tyron Pandit to the Cultural Council. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to reappoint Laurie Tyron Pandit to the Cultural Council for a three year term to expire on August thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Moved moved by Julian Hirsch, seconded by Scott Rogers. I will just clarify, unlike the other motions that we approved previously that expire on April thirtieth, this one expires on August thirty first. And this is because the Cultural Council Cultural Council can serve no more than six years from the date of appointment, and they are not the same reappointment schedule as other boards and committees, if anyone was wondering about that little detail. So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. Congratulations to the appointees and congratulations and thanks to all the applicants for these positions. And we do, as they say, encourage you to to seek other positions that are available. Next on the agenda is the set the meeting schedule for September through December for the Board of Selectmen. John?
Yes, in your packet is a memo with the proposed schedule. For the month of September, it would be a normal meeting schedule, which would be September thirteenth and September twenty seventh. In October, we typically have one meeting due to conflict with the Columbus Day holiday. That's being proposed for October eighteenth. And then your regular scheduled meetings for November would be November eighth and November twenty second. And then in December, we would schedule the Financial Trend Monitoring Joint Meeting with the School Committee Appropriations and Financial Planning. That would be December ninth. And then one more meeting before Christmas would be December twentieth. So that's the proposed schedule for the upcoming quarter.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to set the meeting schedule for September to December twenty twenty one as follows. September thirteenth and twenty seventh, October eighteenth, November eighth and twenty second, December ninth, December twentieth.
Second.
Moved by Kristen Wickstead, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any discussion? I think the answer is no. I already asked that. Kristen Wickstead, roll call vote.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda. Execution of Cemetery Deeds, one one two two, one one two three, one one two four, one one two five, and one one two six.
I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds, one one two two, one one two three, one one two four, one one two five, and one one two six.
Second.
Moved by Kristen Wickstead, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. John, any other business come before the board this evening?
No other business this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
I think I had Kristen Wickstead on the motion. Did I have Leslie on the second?
Julianne on the second.
Julianne on the second. I can't look at opposite diagonal ends of the screen at the same time. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie, I'm sorry, Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
I, Jason Pro, vote aye. And you're all probably as glad as I am that this meeting is finally over. Thank you all to staff members. Thank you to Northborough Cable Access. We appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this for our meeting tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Take care.